Uh, meeting of the planning board. Um, we call it the orders since we have a form at six thirty. Regular statement, this meeting is being recorded. If any other persons present or on Zoom are recording the meetings, must notify the chair. Being none, thank you. So roll call of us, my name is George Palumpes and I'm the planning board chair.
That's how's everybody's chair. Peter McIver.
Victor Michelle Clark. One, one member who has an excuse that's. So the first order of business is the approval of the minutes from December fifth. But most of them. Well, second. Uh, any discussion of these minutes?
Yeah, they look pretty good. Thank you, Eric.
Great. Hearing none. All board members in favor of approval?
Aye, aye, aye.
Next word of business is a public hearing. Um, is the application of. W and A real estate LLC property located at what thirteen eighty-five Berniston Road. That says Axmap R ten plot A eight A, which is located in the general G C zoning district. There's special permit to sections two hundred four nine. Let's see, C twenty-one, two hundred dash four point one four and two hundred dash eight point three, but also two hundred. That eight point four of this only one. In order to not allow us contracting yard and open storage of raw materials and equipment at this location. And we have folks presenting for us.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. Um, my name is Kevin Parsons and I'm attorney in Shelburne Falls and I'm here with Weston Schloop and Andrew Nolan and. They are the principals of the uh, of the applicant LLC and uh. These fine young gentlemen are hardworking people. They uh, started logging when they were sixteen years old. And uh, they've developed a pretty nice niche in the, in the area of the logging. They do uh. Logging throughout Western Massachusetts and Vermont and New Hampshire. Up York State and Connecticut. So they've got pretty large equipment. Um, it's a big uh. Uh, these big harvesters and these uh, also uh, transport vehicles that they use in the. So they can cut down a lot of trees very quickly and uh, and that's, that's good things. Um, what this uh, what they acquired this property for is they, they needed a place to. House their stuff frankly, uh, they had a, a shop up in uh, the Andrews place up in uh. In Shelburne and, and that uh, they kind of outgrew the neighborhood for lack of a better term. And so. They've acquired this property to move their business to. Um, for quite some time, they, they. Also operated in addition to the logging business, they had trucking that they, they had their own trucks that they would use. Because they would be moving quite a bit of material and then they had also when trucks were down. When they didn't need them for their purposes, they would hire them out. Uh, they've gotten out of the trucking business. So now all they're doing is all, all. They're hardworking. Um, they go out and they, they harvest timber for either for themselves. Or well, processing some firewood. That's very uh, it's pretty small part of their business. It's really about going out and harvesting for. Either landowners or mostly timber companies. And so their equipment is usually in the woods. And then it goes from one site to another, but they do have to bring it back once in a while to service it and they have some other stuff. This incident to their business that they keep in their garage. And so that's what they want to use this for is for to, so that they can work on their own stuff. They're not gonna hire out to be doing anybody else's. They. They got enough uh, to do on their own rather than uh, working for somebody else. So just to be able to. Go into the building and use their building for purposes of repairing their stuff, storing their stuff, and then also up on the lot. To bring in, once in a while they'll have logs that they want to offload or, and then take them to another place or hold them for a temporary period of time. And then also for processing of cordwood. Um, and so they'd be bringing in a uh, a, a wood processor. And this is all. Indicated in the, in, in the materials that you've been provided. So um, so that's essentially what they're looking to do. It's a big site. It's a kind of a unique situation. It's over thirteen acres. Up to the north end of town and, and they really only have one residential neighbor down below them. They get along great. Uh, no problems with them and they're supportive of them and, and uh, there, there just isn't any issues. As you know, that this was the. Indoor action facility which had a lot of traffic and this has very minimal traffic. Just looking over some of the comments by uh, um, Eric and then also the building inspector. And no bigger shattering stuff on our part really. Um, you know, it certainly appears to be fairly reasonable as far as some of the. Concerns that were raised and, and I can take on any one of those or all of them together, whatever is the pleasure of the board.
Thanks. Yeah, we'll go through them and, and I know you've responded.
Yeah. Okay, and um, so any questions? We're here to answer them or just take it from there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I think I'll open the uh, public hearing at this point. Um, so uh, Eric, do we have anyone? Sign up from here. Do we have a sign up sheet?
Oh, yeah, um.
Well, we don't necessarily need one, but I just wanted to add.
No, do it on the side.
Okay, so we're opening here for a public comment about this special permit and trying to look up on. The uh, screen as well. Who wants to? Is there hand? See anybody wave a hand? Okay. So uh, hearing that there's no public input. Uh, it suggests we close the public hearings. And Eric, we need a vote on that, right?
Um, but. I don't know if you want to close the public hearing at this time, but you do want to close the public hearing to a couple of public comment.
There you go, that's right. And I do that or we do it?
Um, you just do it. You, you already did it.
I did it. Alright, great. Alright, um, so uh. Board members, I don't know if you want to start with questions. I know that Eric had sent out some. Um, provided it referenced um, some comments. Do you want to hear? Those got to be gone through first? Would that be helpful?
Yes, yeah, I think so.
Will you be able to run through those Eric, consider ones from yourself and the building inspector on those? Alright. Thank you.
So we received comments from four departments. Engineer superintendent has no comments or issues with the proposed project. Fire department. He will need to see an evaluation from an engineer or architect regarding change of use for him comment on requirements that from the fire department. Uh, his other comment is they will need, the applicant will need to complete N F P zero zero six form. With a list of any and all flammable combustible liquids, which is an annual permit.
And you had seen.
Yeah, that's the issue.
Uh, from myself from Department of Planning and Development. This board is inclined to approve the special permit and the Department of Planning and Development recommends following conditions of approval. The metal building structure that change use from indoor action. Recreational use to an automotive repair and servicing shop shall obtain all required permits. From the building inspections department for change of use and occupancy within sixty days of approval. And shall submit such documentation to the Department of Plan and Power. Two, the automotive repair and servicing shop shall only be used to repair and service. People's and equipment for the business currently operating out of thirteen eighty-five Ernestine Road. Three, the open storage of raw materials and equipment shall only be for materials and equipment directly related to the business. Currently operating out of thirteen eighty-five Ernestine Road. Four, the applicant shall be in compliance at all times with section two hundred dash six point eight, which is the performance standard section. Of the zoning ordinance. Five, no materials or equipment shall be stored within any resource area under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. There are wetlands i- in that area. Six, the applicant shall complete F P. Zero zero six form with a list in any and all flammable combustible materials. And submit that to the Greenfield Fire Department and the Department of Planning and Development within thirty days of approval. And seven, the applicant shall submit a containment plan for all fuel tanks, all flammable combustible liquid. Locations and hazardous material areas identified on the submitted site plan. Two, Department of Planning and Development within sixty days of approval. Not in the memo, but the reason for that, well, it's actually later on in the memo, the reason for that is because. The planning board's a special permit granting authority because this is in a zone three water supply protection district. Otherwise, it would have been the zoning board of years. So because it's in that zone three, the entire area of thirteen eighty-five Ernestine Road. We need to see a containment plan for any of those materials. That's, that's it from Department of Planning and Development. And from Mark Snow, building commissioner. I'll just read his comments. That R ten plot eight A known as thirteen eighty-five Berniston Road is located in general commercial zoning district. Indoor action center. When operating occupied three structures located on this property. One structure was an inflatable dome that was used and occupied for indoor recreation. The inflatable dome has been deflated and lies on the ground. One structure is a one-story. Wood structure located next to the inflatable dome structure. Current use and occupancy of this structure is unknown. One structure, metal building previously occupied, used as indoor acting gym. Has changed the occupancy and use of this structure, changed from indoor creation in a gym to uh, to auto repair servicing shop. The application for special permit is for a special permit to allow contractors here in the general commercials zoning district. Uh, according to the table of uses, this is allowed in the G C by special permit. Comments, the inflatable dome has been deflated, lying on the ground. A permit to demolish a structure such as an inflatable dome requires. A permit from the inspections department. There is no record of a permit for the demolition of the inflatable structure. Board members may wish to impose a condition that the permit from the inspections department must be obtained. For the demolition of the inflatable structure and that the structure is properly exposed. Two. One structure has changed occupancy in use from indoor decoration to an auto. Auto repair and servicing shop. The purpose of this auto, the first service shop is to service and repair the logging business owned equipment. For section two hundred four point nine, C ten, in table of uses, an automotive repair service shop requires special permit. Board members may wish to impose a condition that the repair and servicing shop. Needs to repair and service their own equipment that is directly related to the current business and that if the repair shop is used for any other purpose or offensive public. Probably business owner must first obtain the required special permit by the regulating land use board for an automotive. And the service shop. Board members may wish to further impose that this repair and services job runs with the business only. Three, board members may wish to impose a condition that the structure of the metal building that changed from indoor recreation to an automotive repair shop must. Gain the required permits from the inspections department and further impose a maximum time period to file construction documents. And complete permanent application for the change of use and occupancy permits. That is. And that failing to obtain the required permits and certificate of occupancy from the inspection department's grounds for a special permit to be revoked. By the board. Four, board members may wish to impose a condition that open storage of raw materials and equipment. Is directly related to the current business and limit the storage of materials and equipment. To that used by the business. It's currently operating. Board members may wish to impose. Conditions for exterior lighting and that all exterior lighting is sound cast, so not create glare or. Gas observable shadows onto adjacent properties nor shall be given skywork. Board members may wish to impose a condition under the performance standards pertaining to noise, sound, vibration, odor, generation of. Dust, dirt, fly, ash, fumes, vapors, or gases. Seven, the board members may wish to impose a condition that the site be compliant at all times with the performance standards of zoning ordinance. And any violation of the performance standards or conditions, best for which shall require the applicant to come back to the board of land use board for review. Of the special permit and conditions. Eight, board members may wish to impose a condition that limits the use of the special permit for the contracts there. As proposed by the applicant, any change or additional uses requires them to come back before the board. For review of special permit. And nine, board members may wish to impose a condition that any landscaping or screening required by the board is maintained. At all times in good faith.
Thank you. Let me just check back. You've seen those and, and um, sounds like you had no concern or question or you want to comment on it?
I didn't find them earth shattering. I think that was a comment. Um, um, just if, if we want to just. Eric's is uh, Eric's comments are the easiest to deal with because there's really only one comment that I have on that. Um. Is uh, we had one. I have just proposed as far as if you wanted it. In, in total, uh, uh, adopt all the recommendations that Eric's put forward. I would ask that on paragraph number five. If you could add the language. Um, at the end of the Wetlands Protection Act, such as to violate such regulations so that. Um, if there's just some incidental thing that is in violation of the wetlands, um. And specifically what I'm talking about is that over in the back corner, um. The, the, the town allowed this to, to pave in the area where the basketball courts are. Is that right?
That is, the town allegedly.
The town actually.
Stall.
Yeah, because I think that the basketball games used to be on Davis Street and then they, and then they put in the basketball courts over there. So there's already an impervious area and there could be, there could be some. Some issues there as far as, you know, that it may have been within the hundred foot. Um, all that they would be doing there, if anything, is to potentially be stat, you know, putting some cordwood on that pavement. So that's why I'm, rather than talk about it and battle about it, we, you know, that's something for the concom to deal with if there was an issue. Uh, that if we just put in that language such as to violate such regulations so that if there's some violation, well, yeah, they'll take care of it. But just not just some on, on bond saying, it's like, no, you can't have anything there. It's like. I, I think you might be able to because there's already that impervious. Material. It's an asphalt basketball court is what it was. The town had a long-term, uh, quite a few year lease there actually. They, they did uh. Apparently put the basketball court in.
Eric is, um, um, yeah, I'm not looking at the uh, recommendations you made because that was the. I mean, what is your um, thought about that?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm good with, with such language. I think that would uh, address the situation. And I'm fine with that addition language. Okay.
Um, and then as far as parking, uh, again, it's a, a. A fraction of what was there before and, and it's just their personal vehicles that come and go. So. You know, it's a handful of vehicles that'd be parking next to the, next to the uh, structure, the, the building. And uh, and then maybe some trailers or something like that up in behind it. But it, it's a huge yard. It's, you know, it's. It's what about seven or eight acres that's cleared up there anyways. It's, it's not like it's getting crowded, so. Um. And then uh, there's, there's no new lighting. Expectation as far as signage, they know that if they're gonna be putting forward a sign that they. Nothing. That's the only comments that I have there. Um, on um, on Mark's comments, uh. This isn't an auto repair. It's, it's, it's equivalents. They're repairing their own stuff. You know, it isn't like a business of auto repair. So I think that, that, I just want you to understand. That's not what they're doing. That's just like ancillary to their business of storage and their fixed stuff. It's. It's, it's not a big operation by any stretch of the imagination. Um, as far as the inflatable dome, um, you know. They don't know, they're trying to sell it. Um, and they have. There's been people that have expressed an interest and uh, if they don't sell it, well, they're gonna have to, you know, pack it up in dumpsters and take it away. It's a temporary structure. It's not a permanent structure. I don't think the demolition permit is even necessary. We're not gonna let be. Making a big deal about it. That, that, you know, for all intensive purposes, the, the struck, the, it was on the ground. Flattened when they bought it. And then they, they blew it up just to see if it was, it was, it was okay. Uh, so that they could market it. And then they had a couple of people that were interested in it. So they just wanted to make sure that it was okay. But obviously the longer it stays on the ground, it's not very good for it. And um, so either it's gonna be sold in the next six months or so or next summer or so, it's, it's gonna be out of there. Because they want to use that area anyways for their, for their wood uh, processing area. So it, it's pretty much a non-issue. Um. And then everything else is fine when you say, you know, compliance with the uh, the hazardous materials and also with any kind of fuel storage is gonna have, they're gonna be, you know. They talked to the fire department, fire chief a couple of times.
Twice.
Twice and waiting for him to come out and he's been pretty busy and hasn't been able to come out and. So they followed up with him and they will again. So, you know, whatever they, the fire department requires, they'll take care of.
Thank you. Any uh, board members have?
There are a couple. It's got to be a drive up there today. I couldn't get up. I assumed that everything that you're talking about, the, the buildings are, are up the road around the curve. I couldn't. It's all muddy, so I didn't want to take my car up there. So it's further in the back.
Which part?
The, like the, the, the blow up building and a tennis courts. There must be.
Yeah.
I got up as far as the first two houses, but then the road was just like. I assume it's up around the, the corner?
Was there a couple of residential houses?
Anyway, come up, you got your metal building, you got a little wooden building. You had a truck parked. You got a big bank over here on the left hand side and then the road kind of went up around that.
Yeah.
But I assume that's where everything else is. But I didn't see anything down below.
Yeah, no, it's all the way up.
Oh, that's I figured out there.
Yeah, on the other side of the cell tower.
That's okay. So you're gonna plan to store logs and then cordwood. What does five hundred cords of wood look like? How much are we talking about that? You know, ten feet high, five hundred feet long? I have no idea what that looks like.
Only the, the size of that tennis court. In the back in the man, I don't.
But it's not even visible from the road.
Yeah.
No.
You won't be able to.
No, you can't see it.
No, I thought that was what I said. But my thought was there. So is that something that you would plan to uh, distribute yourself? Are you looking to do? Uh, people buying it, coming up to your place and loading their trucks with cordwood or?
That's very, very minimal of that. We deliver ninety-nine percent.
I just think you got a traffic and the roads and everything else, that's gonna start happening. So there's not gonna be any. Third-party logging trucks driving up and down. It could be your trucks. You're gonna be, you're doing, you're gonna store your equipment back up in that corner as well. As your thought is up around the corner or down low where the houses are.
Your equipment would mostly stay right near the, the shop building.
It's your job building. Yeah, I think what uh, Mark is saying, it, it's changing use. It was a tennis court, it was a.
Yeah.
Playroom. Now it's auto repaired. I mean, it's an auto repair shop, but it's a change of use. So you're gonna want to see you. Go ahead and permit it as something different. Uh, that's the only question I had. Before I thought of the thing about the tanks, I assumed you're gonna, I always said it was double wall, but. There's no gonna want a containment around it because of the wetlands. And I assume you may have, act, you have to look at it as being a fueling station. I assume you're gonna have delivery trucks coming in to make the delivery into that tank. So you might want to make sure you have all the right. Catch basins for overfill and spill protection and all that kind of stuff that really be sure that it's meeting with the requirements of them. Go ahead. Thank you. Thank you.
Peter.
What are you gonna do with the rest of the site? It looks like you're using about half of it, part of its wetlands. There's a hill with a cell tower and a bunch of trees. You. Log those too, or did they stay, only log things off the property?
Initially, we were hoping to. Take more of that hill where the cell tower is out so we could gain access to the garage. Um. And to switch gears, we're phasing out of the trucking business like Kevin explained. So really at this point, the only other land that we would probably utilize is where the. Dome is, where the inflatable building is. Once we can get rid of that, whether it be sell or dispose of it. Other than that. Don't really have any intentions and we just want to run our existing business there and have a place to park and. Maintain our equipment. As Kevin expressed, we're not open to the public for equipment repairs. It's just self.
That would be a different use.
It.
It's not trying, you're not trying to be a repair shop. You're trying to be a storage yard. And that's why you're talking about, you're not gonna be repairing other people's trucks.
Right.
So I guess like. I think you, Eric had a condition in there that was about lighting. Or maybe Mark had that.
Yeah, I think Mark had a condition about lighting, but uh, they're not proposing any new lighting.
No, no. So again, I mean, so my two concerns with a site like this would be one. They'll limit the amount of light pollution that creates, especially after hours, turn them off. You can't do that for security reasons, have lights that are pointed down, you know, to dark sky standards.
Yeah.
And then to limit the impact on the, to the thing, you don't need the rest of the site for. The use or whatever else. I don't know what kind of conditions we can put in there to protect. Existing. And the wet, the wetland does a lot of this to, to avoid clearing the rest of it, or if you do have to clear things or do any landscaping that you replant. With non-invasive native plants where possible, are those? Within our powers and is that something you guys have, have thought about?
I think that's one of the conditions. You can say we're approving it. But he's, what they're talking about now, any changes to, and you think acquiring more land or clear more land needs to come back again. Something, I think that's a condition that.
You said you put on that.
Yes. Cause we, we prove it as it is and what your plans are now, if you change your mind later on and say, okay, now we're gonna do this over there. You'd come back again and say, okay, we wanna, how we wanna do this over in this corner.
They don't have any plans to clear any more land.
No, but if they do.
Yeah, yeah.
The majority of the wooded land left is wet, like you said. So there's, there's, there's really unusable land. Maybe a couple acres just north of the cell tower, but it's all on a hill and we have, we have all the room we need for.
Okay, good. It's just, and I don't expect.
Yeah.
There's a few things we have to.
Yeah, if, if there's an issue, we'll.
One time we can talk to the board. Okay, so.
We've got plenty of.
Assuming you have enough room as it is, but if you did need to re-landscape, you would do so in a way. Implement native plants and manages.
Right.
Uh, invasives.
So that sounds like that would be a condition rather than coming back. That would be a condition.
Yeah.
Oppose now and then say, and here's what.
Right, yeah.
As the things come on.
Please, I'm still one concerned about that. I mean, the, the, the remaining area they specify is all under the purview of the conservation commission. Um. Anything they do in that area, they'd have to go before the conservation commission. By putting a condition like that on, you're kind of. Saying that maybe they can use that area, but then no matter what, they have to go before the conservation commission. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
On the northwest side of the hill along the driveway that. Because I don't, it's not clear to me exactly where that boundary is, to the extent that there's land outside of that.
Okay.
There's stick.
Got that. Makes sense. Thank you. Now, um. There's our two conditions. You were um, from um, the building that you were at uh, that's about one is the. Need to designate parking. So. Uh, accurate or we just, it doesn't seem like a big deal, but is it?
It was mentioned.
Yeah, it was mentioned. I'm not, I, I'm not sure if that was Eric's or. Building's. Um. Uh, it's a third, uh, it's a thirteen acre site that, and they have a handful of trucks. I mean, as far. They, they have no interest in parking their vehicles down by the road. They're gonna park up around their buildings. It's a huge lot.
Yeah, no, they got the problem.
Yeah, parking's all gonna be where existing parking spaces were for the previous building.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. Um. And uh, you're saying about the demolition, that seems unnecessary and mostly.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I mean, I haven't talked to Mark about it. It's a temporary structure and I don't know why you'd need a demolition permit for a temporary structure. Do you need a permit to construct it when you blow it up?
You ever thought about that, Eric? Do you have any perspective?
When it goes up and down, I just like.
We're just talking about the inflatable.
Yeah, like again, the things that.
Put that up and down in a few hours. You can have it blown up and.
Right.
Fed it off and it'll be down within a day, you know, up and down. It's like a big bouncy house essentially. Yeah.
So what I'm asking, what I'm asking for is that you, you, you don't impose a uh. I'm gonna have a conversation with Mark about this and, you know, maybe it is and maybe it's not, but I would just ask you not to put a condition on this permit. That they obtain a demolition permit for something that may not be, be required. I'm, I'm thinking that it doesn't because.
You say all permits are required.
Excuse me?
You say all permits that are required.
That's fine.
That's not even a condition.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's part of the job, right? Alternative required.
Just to add.
Where you do business.
To add is that, that's the way the property was purchased, was it had been deflated for two years prior to acquisition of the property. Kind of out of our hands. We didn't own it.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, there's no regulation saying they can't have a deflated dome, dome sitting on their property.
Yeah.
No regulations against that. Um, it could be part of the outdoor storage of material and part of the special permit. But if they use the building for any purpose, then. Of course, they'd have to come back. You could have such a condition as that if you're gonna use this. Inflated dome for any purpose, and you must. Come back for the board.
To indicate you're utilizing that.
Yeah, or state what the purpose is for and um, but if they're just gonna get rid of it or sell it, then no worries.
Yeah, demolition doesn't seem to.
Demolition. At this case, I mean that. They're gonna probably sell it. If not, they're gonna get rid of it. Well, I don't think it. I mean, that, they're gonna probably sell it, if not, they're gonna get rid of it, well, I don't think a demo permit's necessary.
It's not a structure per se.
You know, it may be that a demo permit isn't required, you know, Mark is the building inspector, I'm not, so if you're saying one's required, then maybe one's required, but I'm saying. Should that be tied to this special permit request, I say no.
That was my point.
They'll have to comply.
I mean, they're really, you know. Be a little. Flip here, uh, there's no indoor marijuana operations looking to open up business these days, so. That's one potential.
That's why the land is rezoned.
That one, by the way, so I didn't.
Okay, any other board questions, comments? Um, the parking, does that seem, uh, there needs to be specified, or is it? Informal enough?
Well, it is within the existing area, it doesn't seem to matter too much to me.
Okay, is there further deliberation amongst the board? We need to.
Yep.
Oh, yes.
Motion for closing of all here. Any discussion, all in favor? Since it wasn't further deliberation, please, and you wanna make a motion about the special permit?
I make a motion that we approve the special permit with all the conditions listed by Eric and Mark Snow. Included with the correction or the modification of that language regarding weapons, is that what it is about?
Yes.
Yes. So that's mine, that's my motion, I think.
And do we want to address the marks those related to the demolition to say if.
No, it's that's, it's that's just gonna be the way it is, I mean, that that when I go to do it, Mark's gonna say, you need a permit or not, so I don't think you need a. Like, like Jeff was saying, that's how you work, you gotta, you gotta meet all the permits, you gotta have the permits to do it, so. We shouldn't have to put that in as a condition that you're gonna meet, get all the permits you need, that's the way you do business, so I don't think it's necessary, I think it's redundant. Say that.
I wasn't sure exactly how he'd word it, and and.
He thinks it's, he thinks it's necessary, Mark thinks.
So I I just wanted to hear again.
Oh, you actually, I can.
Comment number one.
Thank you.
Thank you, the inflatable dome has been deflated in the flying ground, permit to demolish a structure such as inflatable dome required. Permit from the inspection department, there is no regular. Or management wish to oppose condition that a permit from the inspection department must be obtained for the demolition of a structure. That the structure is properly disposed of.
So if we endorse that, we are making it a condition.
Yes.
That they get a demolition.
So is that. If required, if required, and when it says I have to talk with Mark.
Yeah, I think.
If Mark thinks it's required, then it's required.
We can, we're just removing it as a condition of the special permit, it would still be a condition of. You want whatever else they have to do, just taking it off of our plate, because it shouldn't have been on our plate in the first place.
What happens if they decide to go and tear it down, and you never go talk to Mark?
Then they get in a different kind of trouble.
Are we in trouble too, for taking that part of, taking over the condition?
Mark has to make sure that the right.
Well, we could, we could add a phrase in there, if confirmed by the. Necessary step.
We have something already that says they have to get all necessary permits and. Already, right, is there a blanket statement that says whatever?
There is no blanket statement, we're all, because from the. Boards have added that in there, even though it's kind of redundant, because they have to get all the permits anyways, it's a requirement, but. But some, like the ZBA recently has added that into their approval, it's under conditions, just to make it clear. Like, you go do that.
I guess I was wanting to respect Mark's perspective, but also, uh, hearing the feedback.
Essentially, what you do is if you cross off Mark's comment, who said, or it says all necessary permits will be obtained. Is that way?
You changed it to that on second.
Board.
And then can you, can we keep the, the lighting and the landscaping?
I I said we should accept all the conditions that were in here. With the modification of the wording for that, for the environmental concern, so now what we're doing is saying, we're gonna accept all the comments except. Comment one, and we're gonna add the comment that says all required permits will be obtained.
Yeah, and I added conditions about lighting and landscaping. Native species and bases of that.
Is the lighting already, your recommendations, Eric, or?
Uh, the lighting is dealt with here, uh, let's see. Yes, uh, can just, uh, comment number five, so you know, that's covered.
But I think Jeff wanted to add. Or something like that, right, that was what you wanted to add.
Here's what I have, any land outside the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission that is further developed. By the property owners, must use native species, uh. For planting, is that what you meant?
Yeah.
Okay.
We also had lighting where you didn't want the light at night. Was for security reasons.
Yeah, that's different than this, so we can add additional language on lighting. This is just as board members, we wish to impose a condition for exterior lighting, all exterior lighting be downcast, shall not create glare. Or cast observable shadows under adjacent premises in order to be directed skyward, I think that handles your.
And I would say also in. Not beyond.
Yeah, all light, not necessary for security, just turn off.
Uh, after business hours.
And lastly, the only other condition that was suggested was, um, that the applicant was commenting on was about the designated apartment. That was unnecessary. That gave lots of as well as.
No, I think my review member just had a comment on parking, he didn't have to be recommended, it was an approval, just said, the smidest cycland in the show location of where the business vehicles. Park on site, the board should inquire on the location.
Okay.
Where they're gonna park, but it's not a condition.
Thank you. Okay. We're clear on the motion and the conditions?
You're clear on the motion?
Any further deliberations? Uh, if not, all board members in favor, say aye. Thank you.
Good to hear.
Good luck. Thank you.
This chairman, yes, request my memory motion exactly for this.
I made the motion.
Okay, so we're going on to, uh, we have a couple of site plan reviews, the first one, application of Greenfield Savings Bank for the renovation of the building. At four two Main Street, retained abuse from a public library to professional office at this location. Have someone here present?
Sure, yeah.
Um, and let me just, but yeah, it'd be great if you could come up close.
The mic may pick you up back there, but.
I think you want to. It's just a little more helpful then.
There's a couple of us, so I can ask to scare. And actually, there's one that's. Um. She's not there right now, she's coming up on, so yeah, there she is.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm Robin Provost from Maury and Trumet General Contractors, for those who do not know me. Sam, up here, Sam Beatty, she's, uh, the one of our architectural design team members from Tom Douglas. You have a new name now, but Tom Douglas Architects, Tom's the, uh, um, principal architect for the project. And Sam is a designer that's been working with us, she follows the projects and has all of our meetings with us. And I don't know if folks know Jim, Jim Lined is from the Greenfield Savings Bank, he is here on behalf of the bank. And he's the contact that's overseeing the project, so we kind of are, you got part of the team. So the Greenfield Savings Bank acquired the former library, as most people should know by now. And that was him a month now ago. So the intent with the building is to convert that building from the library, which it was previous, to actual bank space. There'll be two departments housed in the building, the building will be basically, um. So there'll be folks from the main bank now, they'll be relocated over to the new location, and then appointments with. People will be, it could just be on appointment only, it's basically not a walk-in facility. The main entrance to the building will actually be. From the, what we call the rear, that's actually gonna become the front, that's from the parking lot, which is the parking lot, that's the library's parking lot. The bank through the acquisition does have, from the town, does have access to parking spaces, we have that marked out in the packet that we. Put forth for you, and basically, there are, um, very little. Exterior changes that are gonna happen to the building, we do have, obviously, it's going to be cleaned up. Any type of repairs that need to be happening on the exterior, it's gonna be brought back to its historical paint colors, the roof's gonna be replaced. So it's basically an overall, um, exterior cosmetic change, and then inside. You'll come in from the ground, uh, that that parking lot area, you'll come in, which is the basement or walkout basement. There'll be the entrance there, and then you'll go up to the first main floor, which is the floor that people most remember from the library. That's where the actual office space will be, and, um, there is some second floor space. The public will not be going there, that'll basically be for the bank personnel, and they'll use that for basically their. Uh, break room space, they'll have a little kitchenette up there, the main floor of access is, uh, that are being used is that main first floor. That everybody's familiar with. We are in the process, the bank is in the process of seeking tax credits on this project. Eligible for state and historic tax credits, so we're working on that process right now. And that's about it, I don't know what questions you have, or, um, so that what we're switching this, so this is a change of use. Uh, and this is what it'd be going to business, this is.
So I'll call myself first, I had one question about the, um, the. Was it garage, then with the children's area, is that being demolished?
That backspace close to the, the li- the new library, yes, that's scheduled right now to come down.
That's I, that's I figured, that's how you can be additional parking space.
That is, that's giving some additional handicap parking.
Okay.
So part of, um, the hope would be that there was more accessible parking available for the library and the bank. So that was a condition that, uh, we're seeing through to the end, obviously, through the, because that was part of the purchase, the acquisition of the building. And so, yes, that's gonna create more accessible parking for folks that would be using both buildings. And then our, the bank's built parking is actually in that parking lot, in the back corner. Well, front, I don't know what to call it, but closer towards the other savings bank building.
Maybe the southwest corner of the.
Doesn't ADA require that the handicap spots be as close to the entrance as possible, so if those, if any of those are meant for your use. Shouldn't they be right behind your entrance here, and not all the way to the side?
Looks like, Sam, do you wanna?
I think that's how ADA says it, these are good for the library, the library, but if they're gonna be for you. It really should be where the, where the white car and the blue car, that's, that should be your handicap parking, may have a little bit of employees. A little bit around to the left and take up two spots over here.
There is actually a slope issue there, so the grade, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear, yeah.
Okay, um, so the sidewalk that goes from the existing handicap spots. It kind of winds around down to that rear entrance door, so. I believe if you had the spots in the southwest corner of the parking lot where the existing bank spots are now. Um, we would have to have basically re-grading and some sort of ramp to get into the rear entrance, so actually having them further away. Means that there's an appropriate slope, you know, distance to get, to have a slope to get to the door, so I think they actually need to be that far away.
Noticed a great difference, okay, perhaps there is.
Yeah, it's a, it's about a, at least a foot, I think, maybe a bit more.
Yeah, I have the same question, because, um, it's the shortest possible accessible route is the standard ADA. And as you're saying, it's not accessible, it doesn't meet the grade standards, um. Was it, was it expected that, um. Those, uh, five spots were gonna be designated, assigned as.
So they're, they're designated, um, as bank parking spots, they're not for employees, those are for, um. Our customers or potential customers who would have business in that structure.
Any other?
How many spots, there's, there's five spots.
Oh, no, five.
The ones across the top are. It's on this, this map here, these are the handicap. That's the orientation, that's north, goes the handicap right there, and these five.
I mean, two handicaps.
Yeah.
For this new building.
Right.
More than you need, or is that the right number, based on the square footage or the requirements?
We believe that's an adequate number, we had originally asked for seven, but, um.
So I guess that's the reason I'm asking. Um, I'm, I think there should be a sidewalk, I know that your main entrance is back in the back. But I would like to see a sidewalk from Main Street along the east side of the building. And I'm wondering why that's not possible, or maybe we could reorient these spaces, so there's a little bit more room along the east side of the building. Hey, why wouldn't people be coming to the main, to the, what, it's oriented to the parking lot, but what about people who live. Southeast of the building that are walking here to do business, they know, they don't have the, you know, the benefit of a side, there's a sidewalk on the library side, obviously. But take the opportunity to have a sidewalk on the, the library side too.
So the folks that are coming here from the public will actually. Be going to the main bank. Some of them, and they'll be brought over from the back parking lot over. And then if they have an appointment, oh, so you're saying if they have an appointment and they walk there, that's your concern? I don't know that we can't, I don't think the grade works even on that side, does it, Sam? For a second.
Um, I'm not sure about the grade, um, going from Main Street to back there, but. There, it does slope backwards, so we would have to check on that, but there's also a very large tree. There, so I don't think that the sidewalk would, I'm not positive if it would fit there with that tree.
The green looks very similar to the sidewalk across the driveway, but that's the side, and the tree seems. Five or more feet from the curb, that that driveway is also over twenty feet wide, which is more than enough. So you could carve out a little bit of space to.
But that's, that's not, that's not our property. And I. And the tree itself, on the age, there was a lot of concern, um, voiced on, from parties. Representing the town that, with the age and, um, historic value of that tree, that, um. We've committed to keeping it and, uh, keeping it healthy. Our facilities director, um, is an experienced arborist who's had it, um, pruned recently, uh, for itself in long-term viability.
I know, I'm, I'm equally, um, sensitive to, uh, not presuming people are coming via, uh, vehicle. But, uh, by becoming, um, on board or by becoming via wheelchair, but not using their car. See if we can get it there, but I think that, um. So we did just make sure everything's on. And, uh, I think the option of going along the sidewalk, it's just so open there, and, uh, there's a, a clear cross, crosswalk. Um, I, I think that would be sufficient for those kind of access purposes, um.
Caught this side here.
Yes.
So they need to make a crosswalk somewhere.
There is, there's a crosswalk, that's. Yeah, okay, that's for the exodus. At least one, yeah, um, and, uh. But I wondered about the, um, the handicap slots will be designated as for library use, or bank use, is that accurate?
No, they're not, they're not designated for one or the other, that was just part of the negotiation, uh, representatives from the city and the library had. Said it would be great if we could get a little bit more, um. And so the bank agreed to do that with the removal of the bookmobile. We opened up a corner and made that available, so that it would be accessible for library patrons as well.
Yeah, as Richard said, the, those two additional ones would make more sense for someone using the library, so even though they're not designated, if someone comes. They go into your, uh, spot, they could go into the one closest, most north, and then they have a pretty straight shot down the sidewalk, they wouldn't have to be up it. So just trying to think it through, thanks.
So if this. Hypothetical sidewalk is not needed for accessibility access, wheelchair access, not the primary way into the. Building, it doesn't have to be up to certain standards of, you know, concrete grade or anything else, could it just be a landscape path, you know? Whatever it's called, the. Whatever it's called, the crushed stone or whatever they make a path out of that's not, that doesn't have an impact on the tree, just runs alongside it. It sounds like you don't, you're not, you don't have a landscaping plan per se because you're not doing anything to the, to the site, is that right?
Because the intent, the intent was to maintain. The site and really not make drastic changes to. The landscaping or any of that other than to bring it up to. Restored your value.
What is the objection to adding some pedestrian connection there if it doesn't impact the tree?
Objections, I don't know.
I don't think that there's an objection. I'm just.
Just that we haven't.
Trying to picture if it's doable.
Yeah, I'm not seeing, just looking at, if you talk about along here, there's a pinch point right there between the southernmost. Accessible handicap line and the corner of the building. So you really couldn't have a.
Pinch point already proposed pinch point.
Proposed because, well.
Well, I would argue for one, for better pedestrian access over one more parking space personally. There's plenty of parking. I know this is a different issue, but. There's a giant parking lot back there. You have to have that space. Is that a condition of the use?
It was a condition of the acquisition.
That you have to put a parking space there or you can put a parking space there?
The two handicap spaces had to be added.
Do you own the, do you own the parking spaces that currently exist? There's four.
Or on the side?
No, that are adjacent to these proposed two.
There's three.
No.
I can't read this one.
Right, right.
The existing parking spaces that you're speaking of, that I believe you're speaking of. Are citizens. That the entire lot is the city. We were just agreeing to add those as part of our projects. And as part of the condition of the acquisition, there was even stipulated that the city would continue to maintain. The roadway, the parking areas.
The other thing I think of this is, you know, someone can just walk across the grass there if they, if they want to, you know, if someone's able to find. I know I used to walk from the back of, you know, the old library up over, you know, up to the backyard. Or so.
I, I think you're right, I mean, they could use, they could use a sidewalk right over. However, here in Cross, I mean.
And there's also pedestrian access coming from the other. Coming from the other, back of the other bank.
That, that has been in place for as long as I've been affiliated with the bank.
That's another way the library was accessible.
Is the only demolition. The, that little shed roof area.
On the exterior?
Yeah. Okay. It's just being remodeled for.
Yeah, over on the opposite side, there's a little back access shed that goes in. That's being rebuilt.
Okay.
And then we are. What you see, if you look kind of in the center. There's actually an egress that's being built in here that comes out. That comes down metal.
That's right. Center stairwells.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are you drawing in the gravel path?
He's trying, he's trying to draw the path there. I think our people move. There was a sidewalk there, but it was on the city side of the property. Fifteen years ago, when the fire station was there.
I'm curious, this is outside our purview, but we're talking accessibility. That, that elevator in there is, is pretty ancient, right? But it is the code. Is that, is that, are you going to be working with people who would be?
Correct, correct. We're going to be, that elevator is going to be replaced. It's going to be within the space. Um, and there is code that allows us to use that existing footprint, but everything's going to be updated.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So the, the size of the elevator isn't being just the mechanics and the car.
Correct.
Okay. Is there an opportunity to add trees to the site?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Is there an opportunity to add trees to the site? Such as at the corner, the main street and the library. There hasn't been one there in a long time, but.
No, but there's a, there's a sculpture there that's going to be maintained. There's actually a sculpture at that location.
There's a tree right next to the sculpture already. You could add another one at the corner of Main Street probably and be okay. There was another tree that was taken down a few years ago that has an adventure on it. I guess so setting aside the site and paving. It'd be nice to fill in the tree canopy again. Where possible on the site.
That's, I think that's a bank and security. Jim, you got?
I would say we're certainly open to considering that. The. The tree that you're speaking of that has a bench built around it. I'm familiar with that and. You say the bank's not. Opposed to considering or, you know, some type of native. Uh, planting that's appropriate.
Every chance we get to have a site plan review, we want to try to reconstitute the urban tree canopy where it makes sense. And there's some openings on your site that I don't think would have an impact on the building. From what I can tell. I don't know if we can. I'm not a landscape architect. I can't tell you where exactly to put them.
They've got trees on here.
There's, there could be more. I mean, I'm looking at.
I'm looking at the drawing here.
That's an old drawing. Yeah, I don't know. What's the vintage of? These different drawings. This, this one.
Clearly the established tree that we all know had the bench around it is gone and that was.
Right, that's been gone for several years. Itself was, wasn't healthy. I wasn't with the bank at the time.
You were asking, could, yeah, about making that a condition for. Approval of this, is this the? It's a change of use. Not the site management. Eric, can you advise us on this?
That's the app, if they're willing to. Add some, if you were additional, then you could put that as a condition.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like you were saying.
I mean, we, the bank has several reasons for doing this and obviously. We're growing as an organization and our main building is person at the seams. And so we're moving two of our. Departments over to that building to make additional room within our current footprint. One of the other overarching reasons was to be a good steward of the property and be a good partner for the community. So the thought of, you know. Adding a couple of more trees certainly doesn't. Sound like a heavy ask.
Great, great.
Be mindful of, you know, the placement so that we want it to be effective. For the city and what you're asking for. We're also. Um, are looking to restore this historic piece. Of, you know, American architecture, artwork as it is. And bringing back its refurbishment to its original colors and everything. So we'd also like to have it viewable. So you can see on the street for people to appreciate. The investment we're making in it.
I think, to me, the goal would be have the, if I had to pick. Have the trees along the sidewalk edge, not up against the building, right? Then it's more just about having a better public realm. For the community. So it's contributing to the pedestrian. Comfort and, and character and, and what you do against the building with gardens or smaller plantings. It'd be great to have as many trees there too as possible, but that's a secondary concern.
I, I don't think we have an issue here.
Great, great. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Is there any lighting? Keeping all existing lighting? And so I guess in that situation, our, I think our conditions can be if you were to change lighting. Make it. Downward oriented and dark sky compliant. That's the limit, right Eric? We can't have them, can't make them change. Lights they have look like they might already be okay, from what I can see, but.
Yeah, you could say any future lighting would have to be downcast and.
Yeah, that.
Seal the doubt test, I think.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Want to make a motion?
Motion to approve. Given those.
Yeah, because they're fans of you.
And I'll say I'm happy to leave you guys bottom standing. Dan uses not all of ours. A theme in this town, I'm proud of it. Let's see. Second motion.
Okay, you're clear on it. Way better, those two.
Plant trees are possible and future lighting will be downcast and dark skies.
I do have it. Thank you very much.
All board members in favor?
Alright.
Bye, you then. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next site plan review is application of Rural Development Inc. is properly located at one seventy to one eighty six Main Street. As of last May, on thirty seven, thirty eight and thirty nine. Located in the central commercial CC zoning district. Site plan review and approval pursuant to sections two hundred dash four point seven. EAT, two hundred dash eight point four of the zoning permits in order to allow the demolition of the existing building. And the construction of a four-story residential building. One seventy six Main Street and the construction of eight townhouse units on parking fifty eight to thirty seven at this location.
Here's, where's the best place to set these up? Are you, can you see that okay?
Okay.
Yeah, and if anyone from the public wanted to see, you could come up front here. I don't know how viewable, are you talking to the cameras?
I think that's what humans referring to, yeah.
I don't know how, that would be pretty.
If anything, maybe right here.
Face the camera.
That's right.
Yeah, it should be over here. Yeah, put it on the screen and we'll look at the screen.
Um, I can, I can get started while you're setting up, since you've got such a packed in on that. So thanks for having us tonight. My name's Alyssa LaRose. I work for Rural Development Inc. We are a nonprofit affordable housing developer. Based in Montague, we're joined also Gina Gavoni, our executive directors here. And then Rebecca Lee from Arlo Beck Associates, who will be going through the site plan. And answering questions related to the site plan and Tom Chalmers, our architect from Austin Design Co-op. Is here to answer questions about the building. And I just wanted to give a brief overview before we jump in. And so as I mentioned, we're a nonprofit affordable housing developer. We were created by the Franklin County Regional Housing and Redevelopment Authority back in the early nineteen nineties. To continue developing affordable housing in Franklin County when public funding for new public housing dried up. Um, so over the last several decades, we've developed over a hundred affordable homes and nine rental developments. Uh, for totaling a hundred and fifty rental units across Franklin County. Our most recent development was in Sunderland. They opened a couple of years ago, thirty three units of affordable senior housing. Um, a little bit of background on this project. This was actually a city initiated project. The community development department. Successfully received a grant from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, their Complete Neighborhoods Initiative. Um, to get some technical assistance to look at adding housing in the downtown. Um, as I'm sure you know, Greenfield has long desired more housing downtown. Going back to the two thousand and three downtown master plan, all the way up to the most recent twenty twenty three downtown revitalization plan. It's been a pretty consistent goal. Um, and so the city connected some consultants from MHP with several different private owners of downtown properties. To see if any of these sites might be feasible for housing. Um, and so the owner, the current owner of one fifty six Main as well as one seventy six Main Street. Um, it's owned by the same owner. Um, worked through this process and was encouraged to partner with an affordable housing developer to take the project to the next step. Um, so that's where we came in. We were happy to partner with the owner Franklin and Main LLC. To continue to look at what may be possible on the site. Um, we also have been supported by the cities with CPA funds for early feasibility development, which we're really grateful for. Um, and recently also have been able to get funding through mass development as well as the Community Economic Development. Assistance Corporation or CEDAC for short, for additional pre-development work, which we'll be continuing to do. Um, so in terms of just the overall concept of the project. Um, you know, we look at meeting your, the zoning requirements for the central commercial district. Um, and so the proposal is to construct a new four-story, twenty-four-unit multifamily building. Um, in a slightly smaller footprint than the existing building at one seventy six Main Street. So that's the single-story building. Um, the two-story building, which is one fifty six Main, will remain as is and will remain under the current ownership. Rural Development Inc. will eventually take ownership of the one seventy six parcel as well as the rear parking lot. Um, so that's part of our agreement with the current owner. Um, the rear parking lot will be redeveloped into eight townhomes. Um, and also have additional landscaping added. Right now the site is entirely impervious. Um, so we'll actually be creating pervious surfaces and landscaping and adding trees and greenscaping. Um, so the total unit count is thirty-two. We have nineteen one-bedroom units, ten two-bedrooms and three three-bedrooms. Um, we're focusing a lot on accessibility. All of the units will be visitable. Uh, four will be fully accessible, one will be adaptable. Um, there'll also be a new elevator for the four-story building and as part of our agreement with the current owner. We will be providing access to the second floor tenants of one fifty six Main. Currently, they don't have access to an elevator. There's a combination of office spaces as well as residential units in that building. Um, these buildings are, both the twenty-four unit building and the eight-unit townhouse building will be all-electric, energy-efficient buildings. Will be meeting Enterprise Green Communities and Energy Star certification and also are proposing top solar. Um. Uh, while we aren't required to provide off-street parking in the CC district, we are proposing fourteen parking spaces, which Rebecca will talk about. The majority of these will be reserved for the commercial and residential tenants of the one fifty six Main Street building. Again, it's part of our agreement. Um, but we have met with the Parking Commission and we understand that our future residents would be able to purchase an annual permit. Parking permit and park in downtown municipal lots. Um, and we also expect that not all of the households hopefully will need a car, given the great location and, and access to transit. Um. Yeah, and just a few other things to note. This is a mixed income development and what that means is all of the, of the units will have. Um, income restrictions associated with them, but we are looking at doing a range of income targeting. Um, from basically folks who earn less than thirty percent of area median income, all the way up to eighty percent area median income. Um, and that is based off of Franklin County incomes that HUD sets on an annual basis. Uh, so just as an example, a single-person household earning less than twenty-three thousand dollars a year could qualify. Under the thirty percent AMI income target, all the way up to, you know, we could have a four-person household. Earning up to eighty-seven thousand dollars a year that could qualify under eighty percent AMI. So the idea here is to really serve a mix of households. Um, we know we have a growing senior population in need of more accessible, affordable housing. Um, but also to serve our workforce, including downtown workforce as well as just the workforce in the region. Um. One thing I just brought in addition to, yeah, is just historic context. So we like to look at kind of the overall context. Of, of the development and the one-story building at one seventy six. And the one-story building at one seventy-six Main actually used to have three stories. Um, two of them were removed back, I think in the nineteen sixties due to, um, kind of underutilization and, and just poor condition. Um, we know that there were previously many more multi-story buildings in downtown Greenfield, um, and that over time. Uh, uh, fires as well as just disinvestment. Um, we've lost a lot of buildings in downtown. Um, so we're actually, we're really excited about this prospect of kind of reinvesting in the downtown, uh, buildings, building up. On Main Street, um, and, and, you know. Really just im- improving that streetscape and revitalizing this section of downtown. Um, in terms of our timeline, we're largely driven by our funding deadlines. So this is, will be a combination of public and private funding. We, uh, will be, uh, applying for low-income housing tax credits as well as a number of state, uh, um, soft debt sources. Um. And then we also have some other funding sources. So we're going to start applying for those. We've been invited to apply in this winter's, uh, funding round to the state. And we also have additional funds that we have to apply for in the spring and summer. Um, so we still have a lot of, of work to do. Um, so we don't anticipate that construction would start until probably twenty twenty-seven at the earliest, uh, with lease-up in twenty twenty-eight. Um, so in terms of, um, kind of impact both from loss of the parking lot. Um, we do expect that a lot of the demand that currently the folks who park in the rear lot there. Um, will move when the co-op moves, uh, to the Wilson's, uh, former Wilson's location. Um, and then we also, um, the current owner has been in direct communication with the commercial tenants. Uh, in the one-town ethic Main Street building, uh, and will be working with any tenants that are interested in relocating to other locations downtown. Uh, when the town comes. Um, that's, that's kind of my overview. Sorry it took so long. Um, and we're happy to answer any questions. And I, I'll pass it over to you Rebecca. Thanks. Before I start, did you have any questions for Alyssa or do you want to wait till the end of the presentation?
Well, I'll, I'll call myself. I'll bring up one, um, key question, I think, is you opted. Great to have, um, I was in downtown. I, I was really impressed with the accessibility because you addressed not just living units, but you can visit. Here's how many, you, you know, people can visit. Um, I was struck that, and I appreciate you talking about relocating the current retail tenants. But I also noticed, obviously, you chose not to make this a mixed-use building. So that's eliminating the, the retail space on, uh, Main Street.
Yes.
And was interested in hearing your thoughts on that.
Yeah, so we originally, um, again, we are partnering with the current commercial owner of these properties. And so his business is more commercial, we're residential. The intent had been for this, the four-story building to be mixed-use. And so the intent had been, um, for the first floor to be a commercial space that would be a condo and owned separately by the current owner. And then the upper floors would be all residential owned by us and managed by us. Um, over the course of the last year, we worked up on, um, financial feasibility analysis for that. And it just came to pass that the cost of building out that commercial space would be too high. Um, and the rents that would have to be charged to support that would be really high. And so it really came down to financial feasibility.
Also safe to say that because zoning requires that the entire. I'm getting this mixed up. I guess, what about the current zoning? Led to the design as it is today?
So the main, the main thing about the current zoning, um, so originally we proposed all of the units to be on the upper floors. Um, two, three, and four, um, because that's required for mixed-use buildings. Um, for multifamily, there is no such requirement. So we were able to move two of the units from the top floor down to the first floor. Um, the main, uh, thing about the current zoning, we really wanted to keep this within the kind of as-of-right realm. Um, and so we were limited to the twenty-four units, but, um, we kind of probably wouldn't be able to fit a whole lot more in that space anyways. So that wasn't really an issue.
Now, you know, if you were aware, there's a current process underway.
Yeah, I'm aware of it.
Partly because of recognizing the need for first-floor units to adjust it so that, um, uh, adjust the zoning. It hasn't happened yet, but.
But that didn't, yeah, and that just to, so that you're aware, didn't have, that didn't have any, um, bearing on our, this process.
Uh, before we go further, I just wanted to, I forgot my notes as well. Um, I did want to, just for full disclosure. Um, I am on the Franklin Community Co-op Board, which has been renting one seventy for a few years for, um, uh, meeting and office space. So I just wanted to disclose that. It, I don't feel it, it, uh, impairs me from making a fair decision about this, but I just want, let me know that. Thanks.
Good question. Is there a reason that? Uh, this may sound rhetorical, but is there a reason why it is four stories and not larger?
Uh, yeah, though the height limits.
Okay.
Um.
And the unit number.
Yeah, and then, yeah, twenty-four units for new construction.
Without the unit number limit, which is no longer limit, would you change the design or the density or the mass of the building?
Well, like we said, we, we'd still run into.
What about extruding it back into the site?
Really isn't space on the site to, to do that.
So it's fortunate that it isn't exactly twenty-four units was what you could fit. It happened to be the.
We could have, I guess technically we could have gone to, we could have gone to twenty-six.
Yeah.
Cause we, we, the fourth floor, um, has two less units on it than the.
Would you rather have twenty-six?
I don't.
Question.
Yeah, I mean, the reason why we ended up with the eight units in the back parking lot, um, was our sweet spot we were finding was around thirty-two units. For financial feasibility. Um, so we'd have to go back and, and run the numbers to see how twenty-six units would work versus. Thirty-two or, yeah, um, but we were basing it on that current zoning context.
Eric, if they found that adding two units made sense for them from a financing standpoint, would they have to come back to us to get a revised? Special permit or is that a minor change that we could accommodate in our permit?
Well, it's nice to do. It's not a special.
This, this is a tight plan approval here, um, not a special permit. It, it depends on the zoning amendment that's going through right now. The amendment says. It would eliminate that, uh, cap of twenty-four building, uh, units per building. And it's, it's still in discussion. We don't know which way it's going, but if that was passed. I mean, right now it's officially the zoning ordinance that says there is no cap on. It has to be voted, so you don't, you don't want to do a project in the middle of it. The zoning amendment hasn't been voted on yet, but, but, uh, right now it is, there is no cap until the City Council votes it down. Uh, but let's say they voted in, which could happen like in a month. Could get additional units.
Can we? Accommodate that provisionally?
Well, it sounds like they would have to run some numbers themselves.
If they want, like.
Yeah.
I mean physically, it wouldn't change the site plan.
Yeah, honestly.
It'd be.
You can see on that top floor player, laughing just two units there.
Okay, so we, we.
We're not approving or disapproving with the site.
Remind me what we're pointing in on today?
Yeah, so you know, a buy right, it's a plan review. You're really just looking at, you know, making sure that other provisions of the ordinance are met, um, landscaping, open space requirements. Making sure the parking makes sense, you know, it's not required. If they provide additional parking.
Okay, so immaterial, you guys could have a few more units. That's the way to weigh it in on anyway. Okay.
So, if I could just follow up with that, if the height restriction were not. What it is today, if you had more height, is that something that you would have exercised? Obviously, funding is, or is, or is four stories like your cap? That's what you would.
Yeah, I don't know. That changes code.
Um, well, so.
I know that's really.
I, I can, I can get in this, I get this now. So we have two building types that we're looking at. We haven't quite decided yet until we get some structural design and cost estimate. But one of them is a, it's called a podium instruction where you have a, a type-one building on the ground floor and a concrete deck. And then you can go to, uh, wood frame and all that. And you could do that for five stories. So that has been done quite a bit around the country.
Six total or five total?
Five.
So horrible.
Yeah. Right now it's three of them. Um, we're also looking at just doing a straight wood frame building, which if it's a protected, then we can do that for four stories. The advantage is to, there's probably some cost advantages to that and also some kind of green and energy advantages to using doing this. But to answer your question, we could technically go with the floor.
But not with the current height restriction.
No.
No, understand.
Yeah.
Question on your elevator. I'd like the, like the, I was, when I first looked at the plan, I was like, why did you put the elevator there? But I understand it. So the, the building next to you is two stories, right? So serving the second story of that building. Could it serve additional stories of a future building that's also four stories tall there?
Yes.
It'll be built such that that could be possible?
It's, the lobby's in the elevator, the same floor, so, yeah, it's just a question of cutting.
You've been very patient.
I just like to talk about plantings and, you know, parking and stuff, so. If you want to hear about that now, I can start. All right. Uh, here's the boring part. So, as you guys are probably well aware, this, the yellow highlighted, um, area is the project site. We've got an existing, um, two-story building, uh, one fifty-six. That's going to remain. You also have a one-story, um, building here that will be demolished and rebuilt into the four stories. Um, the entirety of the project site is within the central commercial district. And we do abut the, the rail that's owned by, uh, last EOT. So this is the proposed site layout plan. Um, the four-story building is shown here. There is access from Main Street. There's also other points of access around the building. Um, there will be some storage for bikes, for tenants, um, and a common courtyard in the back here that will be. Um, secured and made whole by, you know, the people who live in the building. To the north of the four-story building, we have some additional bike storage, bike racks. Um, proposed dumpster with a crosswalk to get you to the parking area. And also the front of the, um, eight townhomes that's being proposed. As Alyssa had mentioned, we are proposing, uh, fourteen parking spaces, although not required. There will be a mix of ADA, um, parking spaces as well as, um, electric vehicle-ready parking spaces. Uh. Oh, and you are, we have designated some snow storage areas where practicable, anything in excess would just be tucked off, say.
And then before you put that, so you're saying EV ready, what does that mean?
So the conduit's basically installed and it's ready to hook up in accordance with the stretch energy code. And I think whether or not the infrastructure is installed at the time of construction would depend on certain grants and whatnot. But that's the intent is to install EV parking spaces there. So grading plan, I mean, the site is fairly flat. Um, we are pitching it towards this dash gutter line here. So that runoff gets to the existing catch basin. Um, that's just north of, of the site. Um, obviously, all the ADA spaces will be in compliance with a two percent max. As far as utilities go for the four-story building, we're planning on, um, utilizing the, um. Water main lateral that was recently installed within Main Street. Um, we plan on reutilizing the existing sanitary sewer lateral that connected into the one seventy-six Main Street. And we are going to be tying in the, um, roof leaders into the existing catch basin, which there's already a connection there. So, um, for the townhomes, we're planning on connecting the water line into the main that runs down Sears Avenue. Uh, and then sewer will be tied into the existing manhole that's at the end of Legion out there. For landscaping, um, we're planning on providing shrubbery around the dumpster enclosure. Um, to make it more aesthetically pleasing. There's some shrubs in front of the townhomes. And then there's, um, several shade trees around the site as well, is enhancing, you know, open space and. Um, trees as much as possible. Uh, we do meet the fifteen percent open space requirement. We actually exceed it. Um, by quite a bit and. That was. So, you guys had any, um, questions on the site plans? I'd be more than happy to answer now. Or I can turn it over to, um, the architect to present their thoughts.
I did want to go back to parking. I just want to check about bicycle parking for the townhouses.
So there's going to be bike racks here. Um, they are open to the public.
Where are they? I'm sorry.
It's right next to the dumpster. It's in between the dumpster enclosure and the, um, twenty-four residential building.
And what about servicing the townhouses?
Uh, well, so they would be able to use, utilize this bike rack, um. So there's a line. So, yeah, they, they would be using that bike rack. And then there will be, uh.
Big bike rack in the, in the, for the apartment building has its own.
Building is, yeah, on the first level there.
Right, I was just thought there wasn't anything beside the townhouses themselves. I mean, it's pretty close.
I think the intent is to utilize, um, this, you know, any one who's really coming in the back there is, is going to be. Um, visiting the, the residential area. Um, yeah, and I, I should note too that we have, like, we, we think of this all as. One development. And so the folks who are living in the townhouses will have access to the apartment building common spaces. So the first floor of the apartment building has, and I won't go over this, but it has the, the laundry room. Um, it has community space, um, and then the bike parking that is outside but covered by an overhang. Tech, that's technically would be for use for any of the residents, not just the apartment building. Um, and we are required to provide covered bike parking, I think, one per unit. Um, but by the state, um, the funding sources that we're applying for.
Definitely is. I, I was wondering about the, I was a little confused in some of these images. It looks like this green area to the, uh, east of building. No, the, of the, the four-story.
Oh, over in here.
Yeah.
Um, do you want to start with?
That's the, the town.
Oh, yeah, so that's not part of this. And at this time, you're about this area. Yeah, so that's one eighty-eight Main Street. It's, it's owned by the city. Um, and it is out for RFP. And so there's, uh, potential for that parcel to get incorporated. Into the site as largely as open space.
Would it be a pedestrian access to the back area? Is that what, is that what you're?
No.
It would just be, basically be a green space. They would have access off of the apartment building for maintenance, not even for.
It wouldn't be accessible to nature.
No, it's really, it's really not really accessible to anybody. It's on a, it's dropping off dramatically.
Significant.
So it's more of a, of a green space, uh, garden.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, I was going to ask, how are you, how are you shading yourselves from the, what's, what kind of barrier are you putting? Between you and the railroad?
Um, right now, so we do have.
So your lot line's delineated, but I didn't see anything as far as.
Um, we are. Putting fencing behind there. I mean, it's, it's got hu, a big drop-off. So from a safety perspective, there will be a six-foot. So from a safety perspective, there will be a six-foot high fence along there.
I agree.
There will be a.
Yeah, two, two questions. First one. So I often, unless I'm looking at an aerial image, forget that there's a train track that goes right through downtown. It's a really weird feature. And the trains don't run very often, but when they do, it's interesting. And when you look up that that corridor, it's, it's unique.
Yeah.
Will that be visible? Can someone walk into Main Street, look down that corridor and look at the train tracks and see that from your property?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, go.
Sorry. Probably not so much um from this. So currently, there's the, the plywood kind of fencing um that's at one eighty-eight Main Street. And then um where our property would start, there will be some um kind of open space before the building starts, and then there will be an overhang um and kind of area for residents to walk through, and we are envisioning that you know, that will be gated at some point off right from Main Street, so there may be some visual in there, but it's really intended, like that space really intended for residents of the, the property. Um. So it's not really part of this review, but um we do plan on submitting a proposal for the one eighty-eight property that would provide um a visual from Main Street of the tracks from the, more on the one eighty-eight Main Street portion. But that's, we, it's, that's in process.
Great, that would be cool.
So to answer your question, some, some of the renderings kind of show that, that's the edge. But it's not, that's not actually part of this project.
And just to iterate to that city parcel is not, you don't need to have that parcel to do this project. Um, I just wanna make sure that that's fair. But we would be happy to beautify.
Make, it would make, it wouldn't be this odd other thing next to you. It would be integrated in a way that makes everyone think you thought it through. All right, the other question, uh, so Sears Avenue, the alley between. So especially if we're developing in part of the parking lot behind there, that really starts to become more of a street. And obviously not a vehicular street, but certainly a pedestrian street. It's already programmed by the, the co-op with after seating. And it's lit and has artwork on it. So, and that might be a way that many of the people who live here and live in, you know, the neighborhood behind or wherever else go through the site. So is there any practical reason why the townhouses are where they are? Or I would rather see them is fronting that access such that it appears more like a street and there's a sidewalk in front of it and there's the townhomes. You two have to set, so rotate them.
You mean like fronting, like along this property line, like a line at here? This is the, the property line here, right?
Yeah, so you would pretend that that's a street and treat it like a street. And not have a double loaded, I mean, in, in, put parking in places that don't compromise that. And avoid crossing it with the driveway, those sorts of things. And there's a number of urban design changes you would make if that's where you're thinking about it, but I wanted to, I don't like, if, if that creates some crazy costs because there's something underground that we don't know about, and why is it the way it is? And are there ways to make it more like what I'm describing?
Um, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's a few different reasons. One is we wanted to give the residents of the townhouses a little bit of landscaped buffer between the sea of parking that is the Genov uh parking lot. Um, and so providing some, some trees and landscaping there. I think also it gets harder to configure parking. Um. If the townhouses were pushed up against that property line, um. Uh, but that's more, but we didn't honestly look at that, so I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah.
Uh, but it might reduce the amount of parking you could fit back there.
Yeah, I think you hit it, you know, just trying to enhance privacy for these townhomes to make it more less integrated with parking lot and, you know, tuck it in, in the back um closer to your property line.
And, and also maintain their access back to the other building. That lot coming to a point really restricts.
Yeah. Oh, come here. It seems like it's kind of maximizing by having it against that problem.
Right.
Yeah.
Maximizes.
And I mean, we're lucky that the railroad tracks are, uh, there is that steep grade, so we will have to do like sound tests and things like that as part of our whole environmental review, but it's helpful that, that there is that great separation. Um, but we are, you know, sensitive to the fact that those buildings will be up against the railroad tracks, so we'll, we'll have to see how, how that pans out, but there may have to be some soundproofing. Um. And I think the other connection that we haven't talked about is where there's it goes in front of where the dumpster is, but there's kind of a, a logical connection from the townhouses to a out kind of an interior corridor alleyway that goes out to Main Street. Um, which you can see better on the floor plans. That allows residents to kind of go through the lobby area.
Is, is this what you're heard?
No, on the other side. So that courtyard between. Yeah, so Tom will talk more about that, but in terms of the site plan, it's, it's kind of you can walk from the front of the townhouses, go across there and go straight out to Main Street.
Because you go out to lot, it's not a public way.
Exactly, so it would just be for residents, but it's another pedestrian access.
Thanks for pointing out, that wasn't evident.
You know, just, they have enough ways to get them out of their own site. Be more important to make it a better public realm for non-residents. And so I would defer to improving the, you know, the permeability of that mega block from these other perspectives first. I mean, it doesn't seem like you couldn't just take this block of buildings right here and just rotate it. You'd have the same, I don't know what your setback requirement is along this property line. You have to have a setback there in this.
It's zero.
Zero, the zero on the C C district.
Ideally, if this, it, so someday there'll be housing here too. Sears Avenue will be a street. You could take these spaces and then make them parallel all along here. And then have a landscape strip like you normally would in any other context and align these buildings along there, get the same number of buildings. You, you still get the same choke point. But this would feel like a street. When this gets developed, it'll feel like a mess, I don't. And maybe there's, I mean, there's always a reason.
It also like be a park, I mean, Austin might be a little bit of a green space within that.
Well, they would need to do yeah, the, because the, this is open here, not be make more sense if this were a street, I think. You, I guess if your concerns are losing landscaping buffer and parking spaces probably could reorient it in a way that doesn't lose either, but does a better job of turning Sears Avenue to a stronger urban portal. That makes sense. Not to try to blow up the profile. It is, it's a simple thing that he would make. We see these when they're so designed, it's unfortunate, but.
Any other questions or comments at this point? On the board or, did you wanna present more?
I can do your man away if you'd like.
So I think presenting on this one, you might wanna take that one down, cause then it'll be more.
So I think we've got most of this stuff already, but four stories. The, there are two units on the ground floor. And I'll look at this for detail, it's sort of a public space. The second floor and the third floor are identical. And then the fourth floor is the same, it's just, it's not, these two units that were here. Is it, main entrance is here. Elevator goes up to each floor, there's a locked off lobby so that people in this, in the adjacent building can get up there and have, not have a key to get in. And yes, this could be, the store is actually, I can show you the, this door here, it couldn't. Section shows the um height limits that were easily within. These are, these schematic building in terms of our four beds. The rowhouse units um are, consist of, they're bookended by a one-story, one-bedroom accessible units and then uh two-bedroom units in between. And no high, but it's, it's that way. Everything is on grade here. And the first floor, these units are also visible, accessible.
Do they have an X carrier? What's the forklift?
So it's really just that entry covering, a little bit of privacy. Showing some of the residents, um, they have just, they have one front entrance, the back door.
They'll help with the, uh, they're facing west, so that we have to set, so having a little help with that too.
So even though we put, when we decided to put two units on the ground floor, we have them in the back, trying to keep the street frontage looking more like a coastal kind of frontage, the other than the two unit spaces, most, the rest of the floor is either utilities or community space, there's a mailroom, there's a office for and then there's the lobby. And this is this, there's an open courtyard between these two buildings, that's the last one that's on this side and also this outside issue. So, you know, as you come in here, you'll be able to see straight through. And as um, this is said, there'll be, you, you're keys that let you residents in the back will also have keys to this, they can.
Can you see through it visually from Main Street without opening doors?
Yes, this is the real glass, you know, the glass, yeah.
And the, the left side existing?
Yeah.
Those window opportunities are new? Um, because there's now.
I think there's a couple, yeah, there's a building there. There's a couple windows on the upper floor. And I think he's in the process of maybe adding a few units to his building and sort of probably changing some of it.
But by having that courtyard space there, that would offer them an opportunity to add.
There's a, based on the distance between the two buildings, there's a limit on the percentage of the wall. It can be glass, but it's pretty high. One, so the two E G S stairs, one exits out into this covered area into the street, there will be an extra courtyard. One thing that's not completely worked out yet is there is a great change between the front and the back. Um, and there's a currently a, a little bit of a ramp that services. So we will be, we'll be working on a, a ramp to get down to this area.
Outside in the courtyard?
Outside.
The courtyard can't do it, or it's, you just need to just in.
Uh, well, the courtyard could pitch possibly if it had a less than, but I think it's more useful as a little space and then also they need to maintain a ramp here, but I think, we're thinking of trying to combine those two.
Do that make a mess of the space back there? Is it gonna be, sometimes those ramps get pretty long.
Well, there's already, no, it, it works out on our site, but we've kind of already allowed for this. And also this one, this, what I'm thinking is that this can be back in here and then have it just.
And the two units are access from the interior only, or they're?
They come through this, this hallway and.
Oh, it's only interior, there's no.
Yeah, these units have next to, right, so these are primarily.
Okay, first floor, before you move on, sprinkler room?
Uh, so we have a big mechanical space, so all of this.
So it'd be in the mechanical?
Yeah, we're just engaging, starting to engage uh mechanical engineers on this now, but there's, compared to the mass space we use to give them.
Yeah, and uh fire alarm panel in that same area?
Uh, well, there'll be a fire alarm panel at the entrance. So this will be a combination divided of electric and water. The building was like, will be um variable heat pump systems, like condensers on the roof. So they'll take up a lot of space.
Thank you.
And they're also, we also have some space for B D A. Which, uh, B D A is for.
By direction.
Why is that these days? Because they changed the media figure.
There's a certain uh radio frequency loss they have to amplify.
It has to be in two hours.
Before we leave from that, um, getting back to my original point about, you know, flooring in Morehouse in downtown, but lamenting the loss of uh, of resale opportunities. Um, I was struck, I get the lobby, I was struck by the lounge taking up a lot of space along Main Street.
This, this one?
Yes, yes, and thinking, boy, wouldn't that, cause, cause in your, in your, you know uh, in your narrative, you talk about people being downtown to access many amenities of downtown. Some of the amenities are retail or, you know, uh, service options, and that's eliminating an option for one. I'm just throwing that out there again, just brainstorm to some extent. I know you have your limitations and sorts of models, but I wondered, as a lounge, how essential that was for the model, the vision presidentially.
I think they get used quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, in our, in our senior housing, we typically incorporate something like this, the community space so that people can get together and um play games and have coffee and things like that. This obviously isn't senior-only building. Um, but it uh gives residents that additional space where maybe if they have friends over or family and just you know, don't have space in their apartment, they can host them there. So it's just meant to be a more active space and uh definitely um carry you on the, the commercial piece, and this was kind of our answer to when the, we had to remove the commercial from the project, our answer was to add the community space in the front so that it at least has that active feel um on Main Street.
You weren't gonna have that if the commercial had worked out.
Correct, yeah, no, or the original intent, like I said, was for the um current owner to, to actually own the commercial space on Main Street, um, but that just didn't work out.
Yeah, Hollywood had found more space upstairs or something like that.
Cause I know you referred to it earlier as public space, and obviously it's not public for the, for the residents. And, and what about, um, is this something that's gonna be clear glass and looking into the lounge? Is that the?
No, or a mixture of something, yeah.
Yeah.
We could have some of the lower panes, maybe more opaque. Or more opaque mixture glazing, so maybe more opaque at the bottom, but we're definitely, it's, it's gonna be a window front.
So people can see it enough.
Yeah, and, and that, you know.
If I could just jump in, this was a pivotal change to, 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 to move away from the commercial and toward a completely residential building. And we think that we can come up with something that's going to beautify, beautiful and really beautify Main Street, but give the residents of this building a secure space inside where they can, you know, perhaps, you know, older kids can hang out and not be with their parents in their units or um, you know, if folks can have, get sober and sit down. There's also going to be a small property management space so that we can um be onsite and have um some eyes on what's going on, have some, some uh ability to meet with residents onsite. Um, and a mailroom, which is, you know, with where, where things are going with retail these days, where a lot of that commerce will happen. What we've seen in other developments in terms of packages coming in and folks doing, come in and access those um right there on the first floor. We did not want to put a uh nonprofit office space in the site. Um, we wanted to keep it minimal, just to a property and an office, um, we thought that would be the best benefit for downtown.
Yeah, and, and also the laundry room that will serve the majority of the apartments, there's just, there's in-unit laundry in the two accessible one-bedroom townhouse units, but otherwise everyone will be coming to this space to do laundry. Um, but that community room is right outside of the laundry room, so it's like a place where you can hang out while you're doing your laundry, uh, chatting with your neighbors, things like that. So it's really meant to be a social community space.
And you were saying some of the townhouses would be using that as well, the lawn?
Yeah, so this, this community.
Yeah, so this, this community space really is meant to be for the use of all, all thirty-two units, not.
The laundry.
The laundry, yeah, so the, the two-bedroom townhouses don't have. Don't have in-unit laundry, so they would be using the laundry room.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Unless. So we talked about the possibility of aspects of this building. Supplementing. For development next door with the elevator. It might be, and one reason why you can't have commercial on the ground floor is because you can either have five thousand square feet of commercial or zero square feet of commercial. Based on our zoning. Right? You have to have the whole floor, you mix use building, the whole first floor has to be commercial. Downtown, is that right?
Yes, currently. For a mixed use.
If, if you, what if you. If that weren't the case, you might be able, you might have carved out a small commercial space, to the extent that it made sense from a finances standpoint, I mean, I'm more speculative to answer that question. But it is possible that next door. Zoning could be different, and it would make sense to keep some of the commercial, make that a mixed-use building. And maybe lean more on this building to serve some of the community spaces and features, I mean. Would you expand the number of units that are served by this building, or would that be a totally different project, and you're not really thinking about?
Yeah, so it'll be under completely separate ownership, so that two-story building, currently, this whole site is under one ownership, but the. You know, the agreement that we have in place is that the current owner will maintain ownership of the two-story building. And we will um, acquire the one seventy-six parcel and the parcel to the rear. Um, so it'll be under separate ownership, and we've actually designed the um, elevator lobby on the second floor to be able to be. Locked so that um. The tenants of one fifty-six main won't be able to get into the rest of the building, because they're technically not our tenants.
Okay, so the elevator is, that'll be the only thing that's shared in the future. Too, it's not like, it's a little grow into that. Then. Takes away some of the questions.
Yeah.
And that building is hundred percent commercial on the ground floor, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Partially the second.
Yeah, it's a mix of office space and residential on the second floor.
And right now, this is, this is, this little stairway is not. Showing a potential access down here to the other lot, but it's not. So here's a typical upper floor. And we have a low one-bedroom units that. Move across the front. And so two bedroom unit tucked in here, and then two bedroom, see two bedroom, one bedroom. And then this is the courtyard, it's above. Elevator and lobby. So these two floors are copy. And then. On the top floor, it's basically the same thing, except. Nothing back here, so this is open.
Relaxes.
Well, I'm showing it, we'll probably put some mechanical equipment out here. Yeah.
And then little space next to the. Is that a common space with windows overlooking the railroad tracks?
Yes. There's a little. Place to sit by the window here, and then on the lower floor. Back at this end, there's also another window into the corridor, but sort of just the lights. I don't know if you want to look at units, but we, in the set has. Unit plans, um. I'd say the only thing to really say. About these is they are all designed to, so um. M A B group one unit, they're all visible, um, we do roll-in showers in all our units. And the bathrooms are configured to be accessible. Um, so. Really, the only real difference between. Accessible, the regular unit is the kitchen. And then we do a few of the, we do at least one kitchen, make it so-called adaptable, which means it has. Everything it needs, except it has lower base cabinets, and they'll put in a way that you can pull them out. So some. Need, needed to use it. They can take the cabinets out from the list. So this is looking. At um, from the street.
For this, to the elevation where I was. Structural type?
Yes.
So that's the Main Street approach.
That's the Main Street, so here's the. And this is the entrance over here. And we're kind of right now, we're, we're looking at two. Re-material changes, this, this brick, and then. Looking at some kind of metal cladding. Break it up. We're. We're just really looking at trying to reduce the mass thing a little bit, and building, this is at the moment, this is like a stucco finish. Let me, there's a potential for some kind of fenced-in mechanical area, if we need it, there'll be a little bit of a, of a, of an elevator and house.
So that's a, that's a stucco material?
Yeah, at the moment, it breathes. This is. That courtyard, yeah, looking back. And so this is right now, there's a couple of windows in his building. And a couple more, and eventually we can build up that courtyard.
So this is the north elevation. So on the east side, there is a covered walkway. From Main Street?
The, from Main Street on the, yes, on the east side is a covered walkway.
Okay.
To the, as a gate?
Yeah. I don't think we've decided exactly where the gate is. So right now, we have, yeah, we have the gate right here. And this leads back in, this is, sorry, I didn't actually mention this, but this is bike storage. And all the gray is covered, so this building.
Would you be visually permeable?
Like, yeah, we're thinking like an iron. And this, on this lot here, which we, we've been looking at, but it would be a similar kind of gate. So I, as you were talking earlier, ideally, if, if this happens here, then you'd be able to see.
Yeah.
There's no, um. There's no way to get from here back to here, it's just.
Is that the pinch point?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
We're right at the property line here.
Texas is, yeah, controversial.
Yeah.
And then, I don't know if we talked about. The streetscape, the landscape along the street, trees and such?
On here?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, so it's really just real right on the street, inside.
So the, the trees would be in the city's right wing?
It's, it's in line.
The face of your building is on the property line, you come in a little bit with an arcade.
So it's following the, the plane of the.
The face of the building is not very. Why didn't you just take that down to the sidewalk?
Take what down the side?
Why are, why have an arcade there?
Well, we were trying to maintain the commercial street front.
Yeah, so we, we had to reduce our square footage on the first floor to maintain. Financial feasibility for a residential home building, given that we weren't gonna have the commercial space there. So these were some of the ways we found it was to. Um, have the arcade in the front, have the covered patio around the side.
And, you know, this will be open in the sidewalk, so there's a little space to. This is the east side. Uh, there's the arcade coming back. This is where the bike shelter would be. Show some people standing here, I'm not sure how that went.
I was gonna say, they can't be there.
Well, actually, in the version of this lot, we do actually have a little, look, a little deck there.
But the natural topography of that chunk of the lot, sort of like drops.
Yeah, it goes kind of in the, yeah, I mean, this flatter, it, it's not so much, it's partly a topography thing and partly a notion. So we all were concerned, so unless we all were. Someone use it. So. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then. It's, these buildings are the. So these are basically almost flat, we've, very slight pitch.
Even though they're not lined up with the property line in the way that that you wanted, we were trying to go for a more like urban feel where there's. Kind of defining the space a little bit more. The tall front facade.
And, you know, we went, we went back and forth about, they should have something in common. With the front building, but they're really very different, some things.
Side streets in Greenville have different.
Right.
Personalities.
Yeah.
Frankly, there's a lot of colors.
Yeah, well, there's, these colors are actually standard hardy plank.
Then what?
Hardy plank siding, cement siding, it's prefinished. One thing I'll say about the construction, so I think one of the most rigorous standards to meet these days is the energy code. And one thing that helps is the sound and insulation. Pretty consistent in there, so when we, when we're building highly insulated buildings, they're also very sound. So between, you know, the, the, the walls will be wood frame wall, and then they'll have layers of. Bigid insulation on the outside and cellulose inside. And we use triple pane windows, so. Hopefully that will mitigate. The. Sound from the trains.
So all of the townhomes will be that cement. Uh, cardboard style.
Yeah, we find that to be. It's the. You know, it's the best balance between initial cost and maintenance.
Why isn't? Six, two stories and two one stories, because those are. All accessible?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one stories are probably two accessible.
There are one bedrooms on the ends, and then the two-story are two bedrooms. Um, and we wanted to have a few uh, walkout accessible units.
Is there a reason why they're on the ends of the building as opposed to? Mass and sample, you make them all of them.
Oh, yeah, we went.
Uh, there's reasons.
You are also providing ADA parking spaces for those units, um, you know, the shortest accessible.
So it helps.
Yeah, one's on one side and one's on the other side, right?
Yeah, but yeah, that was the question.
And again, back to, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
If back to the aesthetics, I, I'm just struck by the number of colors, and it just kind of jumps out at me. You know.
Yeah.
Matter of things.
Generally, yeah.
I was just wondering. Why not have something more consistent, um. Across.
Probably, that most likely probably will happen.
Yeah, I mean, it's not set in stone.
It's not, but, you know, people like color.
Might be of Europe.
In reality, the, also in the reality, these colors are quite more, showing here.
Okay.
Um, they, because they. They fade, and so. The company doesn't want to be liable for faded colors, so they're making all of their colors more and more faded. Yeah, so even if you're doing different colors, they're all in the same. Strength.
Uh, I did, and it. Oh, uh, no, um, you mentioned E V ready areas. The handicap spot. Or the accessible parking on the. Pinch point end. Yeah. That. That would potentially have access to. E V charging.
So it, right now, we have, we have two E V chargers here.
Yeah, there's separate from ADA, uh, there, yeah.
But could potentially be shared use with the.
Yes, this one could get.
But the same opportunity is not on the other side?
That's correct, so we're, we have our transformer, our new electric coming in on that side, so it just makes sense to have.
Yeah.
You know, a centralized location for E V charging.
I have a functional question, uh, as far as solar, because there was a mention of solar. Uh, ready, I think, at some point, provisions from, revisions. Move my solar and then other places, it says it will include Utop Solar, and I wondered for both.
Yeah, I mean, our, our intention is to have Utop Solar, especially. For, to help our operating cost, because it would be an all-electric building, so.
For both structures?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, that's our intention, um.
Thanks. For the board question. Um, there was one response about the provisions for underground placement utilities, the response was, where are feasible, I just wondered. Um, is there a place where it's not feasible?
What?
I, I would assume all our utilities.
Yeah.
Eight six of, uh.
I don't think we'll have any over here.
Sure, I wouldn't expect enough, but this is from your.
Yeah, so all of our. Utilities. At least for four stories, obviously gonna be underground, to get the power for, to the townhomes, there's a couple of.
Utilities out in parking lot.
Yes. Yeah, there's a couple of poles, these are light, uh. So there's a couple of utility poles, some of them are strictly lighting poles, so we might have to bring in, depending on what, um. On every source. Yeah, this is our source, but depending on what, every source, you know, how they want to go about it, and they have to be, or we could do underground electric. It looks like there's underground electric from this pole here, at the end of Legion Asper's. Um, that services, you know, buildings along the, so, um, you know, when we get to that point of. Of the design where we're, you know, coordinating with utility companies, um, you know, obviously. Whatever they prefer and. Works with the site.
Downtown is all fed from an underground. All electrical.
So, yeah, probably.
I also saw in the landscape, um, lighting, it said, building mounted lighting will be detailed, rebuilding private construction, so you don't know.
That's correct, it'll all be dark sky compliant, um. In accordance with, and meet the, comply with the, the zoning ordinance regulations.
Thanks.
You have a tree plan, whether it's a. That's where everything makes sense, right?
Pretty much. Trying to provide that buffer, you know, between the.
You didn't have to build any parking, you said?
Correct.
You would like to at least build some accessible parking for accessible units.
Oh, there's some parking for.
Yeah, no, we have to have at least ten spaces available for one fifty-six main. Yeah. As part of our negotiations with the owner, so ten is the minimum, we were able to fit fourteen.
So, yeah, just to backtrack, none's required per the zoning, but there are some required per their agreement.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Confused.
Hey, it's great. Definitely. I don't like this. Really? Need more action to that, I don't know, it's hard to. Comment too aggressively on things that are, you know, on the, on the clock, trying to get financing and. It's more important to have this project like this than to have the concept be perfect and the project not happen. So, how do we thread that deal?
I actually really like the layout of where those buildings are in relation to both the railroad and the parking lot. But what makes more sense in my mind for how that's laid out there. Your orientation issue.
Yeah.
Is really your comment about offering, I believe it was yours, uh, for some, some separation from the parking area. Because really, if you're standing, I'm pretty familiar with this lot, so if you're standing in that back corner there, it's a parking lot. And there's no way to shade that to the residents, like it, it gives it more of a residential feel and a very urban spot, so. To me, I, I really like that from a residential standpoint, it kind of sets it apart, but.
I don't buy that that's what it's doing, yes. I get the, the idea, the notion, that, I mean, this unit here is. Six feet from a parking space. But this one has a nice buffer, that one has a nice buffer, but you could still get.
Still grass.
If the net on average have a better buffer. And do parallel parking, do it with different parking figures and lose those four spaces you don't need.
Then we wouldn't be able to put in our very small state inclusive place structure that we hope to do if we have a budget. In that little corner, um, in that, in that, um, triangle in front of, right there, that area, yeah, that's where it would probably have to go.
I think to make it work, they would have to be right on the street. So it's sort of split, doesn't, there's not enough space anywhere if you start splitting it. I, I understand what you're saying in terms of early design. I think maybe. You know, in the future, if that parking lot does get built up. Then this might be a nice little oasis, you know. It might actually make more sense and. You fill a parking lot in the building, then you have like a triangle.
Yeah.
You can't get away, you have to have this.
We do, you know. Need that for primary access.
And access to the commercial space of. One fifty six, yeah.
Where's the, where's the, where's the first stop when you finish your start?
It's at that corner. Um.
It's pretty much of a free flow.
Yeah.
Um.
That's, no, that's not building, that's like a paved, uh, there's some dumpsters in that, you see where that fenced in area is, there's some dumpsters there. So that is, uh, Greenfield's market, pardon me.
Yeah, I think.
Is that gray. Area, and then the building goes starts. Sorry.
Some of those lines delineate.
Ownership. Yeah, so this, this is, um, the public lot here, and then this is still parking, but it's, um, it belongs to this person.
Is there anything happening? The underground connections, I've lost track of anything of this zone. I, I, I agree that. If, if this all changed, you might want this to be different, maybe you don't need the parking, if this will become more green space or have a different personality in the future. For now, I mean, what it is now, it makes sense, it's only the chicken leg, there isn't anything good to respond to here, so do what we can here. And these people wish that this were different when they do their building pitch. Is there anything hard wired into this zone here? That would make it so you wouldn't want to reconfigure this very much, or in terms of like. Underground. Utilities or water mains or.
Well, the water main goes downstairs out. Yep, so that's where we're tying into, um. Again, there's a gas main that goes downstairs out, but there's not any, like, you know, our proposed, if you flip back a page. Yeah, so our water, our proposed water connection is going to be coming off the main that goes downstairs out, gas and terminates somewhere in here, but that's as far as underground.
That'll allow the green gas. Friends approach your gas.
No gas.
Is this accurate? This is where it's going to go?
Yes.
It doesn't seem like anything sacred underground here, we can play with it later, so I can. Pretend that someday it'll be. Right, okay.
There was one, uh, one other comment I want to check on, um, in one of your responses in the project description. Uh, the statement, unique natural and historical features have been identified and preserved, and I wondered what you were referring to.
Yeah, let me just get to that.
It's seven. Section number nine. Thoughts?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we've submitted, um, a project notification form to Mass Historic Commission, they actually originally, um. Came back and asked for it, is it from the Greenfield Historic Commission, and so the Greenfield Historic Commission has reviewed these plans and provided comment. Um, back to us as well as, uh, MHC, um. They basically said they don't have jurisdiction over the, the property, didn't define it as a, uh, significant, uh. Uh, property of historical significance.
Right.
Um, they did have some comments on kind of, uh. Uh, materials, um, and maybe incorporating a little more brick on the, the commercial facade or the boat commercial facade. Um, and so we do have those, those comments, um. They haven't been incorporated yet into these drawings. Um, but that's, otherwise, we've resubmitted our project notification form to Mass Historic with the historical commission's, um, input. So I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, if I can do this just from the CPC side of things.
Yeah.
Um, we did work with Tim Greater on some cornice maintenance. Um, so that there, there may be indeed some cornice maintenance that also relates to this part of the building as well. But we, we did support, um, cornice maintenance for, for, for his buildings.
Thank you. Um, I know we have some, uh, reports from departments, so.
Hey, we received review comments from Mark Snow Building Commissioner. Myself, but planning and development and from the engineering superintendent. I'll start off the engineering superintendent. Water, ensure easements, the applicant is proposing to connect eight townhouse unit building to the existing public sewer main, um, in Legion App through the city owned Legion App. Parking lot into the existing six inch cast iron water main that runs from Main Street through Sierra, ending in Legion App parking lot. Easements are required for this site plan proposes a thirty foot wide sewer easement and a ten foot wide water easement. A twenty foot wide sewer easement is standard for the city and is recommended in this case. Given the location of the next into the distant water main, a fifteen foot water easement is recommended. Water sewer services for proposed four story residential building, definitely is proposing to reuse the existing six inch. Sewer service for the one seventy, one eighty six main, if the service is shown to be in good condition. This is allowed, proofable video inspection shall be provided to the DPDW. App can. Is proposing a new six inch ductile iron fire line to the proposed building which be connected to the existing lateral. That wasn't still old as part of the new eight inch water main upgrade on Main Street, a four inch domestic service is proposed offered a new fire line. Uh, details, the sanitary sewer manual detail on sheet D two of the plan. Set does not meet the city's specifications, the six inch extended bases required. City sewer manual detail is attached and that was forwarded to the applicants. Uh, C from Mark Snow. Comments, sheet C three notes under the construction sequence referred to city of Northampton, not Greenfield. Not should be reviewed, revised as needed. Board members should establish if Massachusetts law, chapter forty, section fifty four A applies to this project. And if the applicants have been in contact with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Railway, Railway Property Division. And either has received consent for this project or determination of implacability in accordance with. That mess, uh, general law. Coming three, sheet C four outline of building at upper levels appear to encroach on neighboring property. Four, board members may wish to impose, may wish to inquire whether the dumpster shown. Serve the twenty four units only, or will the dump just serve both twenty four units and eight townhouses? Sheet C four outline of building at upper level appears to encroach on neighboring property. Comment five, board members may wish to inquire how often dumpsters will be empty, they may wish to impose a condition that requires dumpsters to be empty frequently to prevent. And promote. Six, board members may wish to inquire whether piles of snow are intended to be removed from the property or stored on property. If board members may wish to impose a condition that snow cannot be stored on neighboring property. Seven, board members may wish to impose a condition that there are no personal belongings, personal furniture, cooking appliances, or other residential materials or equipment allowed to be stored along Main Street or visible along Main Street. Eight, board members may wish to inquire whether the eight by ten accessory structure, the shed will be situated within a closure similar to the dumpsters. Nine, board members may wish to impose a condition for exterior lighting that all exterior lighting is downcast and shall not create glare or cast observable shadows under adjacent properties nor shall be directed skywork. Then board members may wish to impose a condition that the site be in compliance at all times with section two hundred dash six point eight, which is the form standards. Zone ordinance in that any violation of the form standard. Or condition of type plan review and approval will require the applicant to come back to the board. Or review of second. Eleven, board members may wish to impose a condition that any landscaping or screening required by the board may be about five, you get safety. Well, board members may wish to impose a condition for construction. Condition that the construction site is barricaded, an improved barrier for public safety in that protected pedestrian walkways provided along Main Street in a joint streets during construction.
Okay, Eric, before we move on to yours, Eric, as I was checking, I know some of the stuff you had responded to, I don't know if all the board members got to see that today that came up. So, um, were there any with those two reports, were there any concerns or questions or they all seem?
Yeah, so, um, for the, the engineering comments, no problem, we don't have any concerns with those. Uh, as far as the building department comments, um, we do acknowledge that, um. This, there's a, a small sliver of land or the parcel that was in Landport. Was at one point in time back in nineteen forty four owned by. Railroad. This little piece here. And would need that, um, consent letter by the Secretary of Department of Transportation, so that's understood, um. And then as far as the outline of building at upper levels appear to encroach on neighboring property, I didn't see maybe. The, um, existing building might have been a confusion point, but, um, we are maintaining, um, at the, the minimum dimension point three feet from the. The property line, so we will be sure to, to, you know, stay within, um, those bounds. Um, dumpsters will service townhomes, apartment, or the twenty four unit, um, four story building as well as one fifty six Main Street. They are intended to be emptied weekly for start, if it's seen that it needs to be emptied on a more frequent basis. And especially since there will be an onsite, you know, management, um, then they'll arrange for a more frequent pickup. Um, snow, I think I had mentioned, there's a couple areas delineated on the site layout plan for some snow storage for some of the, the lesser storm events. Anything in excess would need to be, um, obviously trucked offsite. The shed, it will be secured securely locked at all times, it's just for storage of materials and equipment to service the property since there will be grassed areas.
It's not for tents.
No, it's, it's just for maintenance and property management only. Correct. That was. Everything else was.
I was just gonna say on the bounds, it might be. We had a, of the survey we were originally working with had a six inch, you know, discrepancy.
Well.
Our building. Was going off the old one at one time. Reducing it by six inches, there's, there's site plan shows everything correct.
Yeah. Maybe.
So this is your. And then, uh, comments from the department planning and development, um, just the recommendations upfront, uh, the rest of it just goes into the zoning district, the youth parking and. General information, um, that hopefully you just read on your own, but I. Basically, what I do is synthesize everything into one, uh, that you can just. Do for an approval, so, for example, if the board is inclined to approve the application and the Department of Planning and Development recommends following conditions of approval. The applicant shall follow all recommendations, the Department of Public Works review memo dated December nineteen, twenty twenty four. The applicant shall obtain the required letter from Massachusetts, actually from the Department, from the federal Department of Transportation Secretary under Massachusetts law, is that Massachusetts or federal?
Yeah, I believe it's Massachusetts.
Massachusetts, always right here, Massachusetts Department of Transportation under Massachusetts law, chapter forty, section fifty four A, and shall submit the copy. To Department of Planning and Development and Inspector Buildings within sixty days of approval. The applicant shall ensure that all landscaping and screening is maintained at all times in a good safe condition. Um, and then I just put these things that Mark Snow put in his, that it detail sheets need to be changed as highlighted in the memos. And then revise plans that submitted to Department of Planning and Development within thirty days of approval. Um, and then there are other conditions, potential conditions that board needs to discuss that's in Mr. Stone's. Now. That could be further conditions of proof.
Thank you. Hey, are there other, um, board, uh, questions or comments? Yes.
Uh, for recommendation number two, um, we do have concerns with, um, submitting an approval. Letter within sixty day period, it's our understanding based on feedback from other projects that this could take a couple months to, um, procure. And that it's a, a public hearing process with, you know, mass DOT, so we just have concerns withholding on to a set. Timeline to be able to send that approval to.
Or leaves that shorter.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and the other issue too is just in terms of the information that mass DOT will be looking for, our understanding is. We need to get further along with some of our engineering, uh, work, uh, because they're going to be looking. It's both, um, kind of a legal process where it's a, it's right of first law process, um. But then they're also going to be looking at the plans to ensure the integrity of the railroad is maintained and, um. We're not at the point in our process where we'd be able to provide that information to them, um. And so our intent had been to engage with the railroad. Once we got a little bit further along, um.
So what's the city's jurisdiction for having a condition like that? It feels like a, like requiring the clean title or something, I mean, that's not really, that's your problem, not our problem. Is this some public safety concern or just want to make sure that, that, that you guys can bill on that piece of land?
Um, it's something that the inspector buildings and Department of Planning and Development have. Big previous situations came up where, you know, that would have been very helpful to have in terms of liability issues. So it's something.
Order's liability.
Of the city's liability, so. It would be good to have a copy of that, um, my question to you guys is, would the condition be good if it was just reworded to say. Prior to. Standing a building for.
Yes, that would be.
Yeah, I struggled sixty days because the railroad, I'm thinking. Thirty days, ninety days, I didn't know what to put, so it makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, I did want to mention that there was one, uh, communication. The board got prior to this, it was, uh. Susan Drufft had sent in, um, behalf of housing greenfield herself and support us. And support us. So um. No other comments or questions, board members. Is anyone feel ready to make a motion?
Motion to accept the plan as presented uh with incorporating. Eric's memo. Of requirements. As amended with the building permit. As the deadline. I'd also like to add Mark Snow's suggestion of protected pedestrian barriers. During construction. As a.
Um if want to consider anything about the. Your glass on the Main Street. Or is that that's necessary to?
You guys, we're gonna be clear. Maybe you can condition it, we've done it in other cases. Okay, so yeah.
Well, he's making the.
I it's not important to me. If someone else wants to make it, I would consider it as a friendly.
Yes, I would, I would. And uh is there any other?
Can you repeat that?
That the um along Main Street, the uh glass would be. And is there any other um proposed additional condition? What we've been, we've been talking a long time?
Didn't feel like we had any movement on. Landscape or footprints or layout.
Or just there was something?
Oh, second. Is there any further discussion?
I make a comment. I'm not generally inclined to like be excited about. Residential on the first grade of Main Street. However, I do work in this building for those that don't know. And as you walk in, there's a lot of photos of what Main Street used to look like. So I love this little historical context because Main Street used to be a lot taller. And I asked that question earlier about height for a reason. Because I hate that we limit our buildings to a certain height. There's a lot of lost opportunity in height. Uh we only have so much land. And if we can maximize our opportunities, I would love to see that. But knowing it is what it is and your project can only be so big. Uh but I. I really, I'm excited by the prospect of big building coming back to Main Street. And it's a really sort of unique project for that spot. Cause the current architecture there is ugly, so. That's all. Thank you for a lot of your work and this was a very well put together presentation.
Okay, all board members in favor of the motion to approve? Any against? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Speaking of height on Main Street. So touching these. Yeah, right.
And the trolley.
Also be sprinkled if those to Main Street burned down because it wasn't.
Please, if anyone needs one, I don't know if we did a biography, but we can just.
The this project be both visitable and accessible is a really big deal to the town. And uh it's, thank you for a review because it makes a huge difference.
Well, your your email put it over the top, so.
I just wanted to say that. It's an exciting project. Yes, I mean, it's really, you finally get some more downtown housing, amazing. Along with the housing gonna be about, it's gonna be in the front room. That the people do together, and that's substantial. And then there's.
Okay, next item is actual items. We have that information in the background. I'll just jump in. I I know the only uh concern I had about it uh right, but that is it was. The stairs, which I think are very important, that's an amenity, and I see they are their own uh parcel. So it's it doesn't go past that.
Someone else that appreciates the stairs.
Yeah, well, there's another set further back that's even more important, and that's blocked off now. I don't know why, but.
Yeah, I remember there was two that I don't block out for many years now, but the stairs are very helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, that's lot number twenty-three.
That was surprising, too, then. So uh any um uh any discussion about this or?
I just had a question procedurally about, is this typically something that the planning board approves as far as town own?
Yeah, so let me go over that a little bit. So the Department of Planning and Development is the department in the city that's tasked with. Uh dealing with city-owned property and surplus property and going through that process. So typically what starts it is a landowner interested in purchasing some city land. In this case, the landowner, former counselor wants to buy three parcels next to his land. So he sends a letter to the mayor and the mayor has the Department of Planning and Development start the process. The first phase of the process is a thirty-day comment period. Uh there's a big, there's a policy on the sale or lease of city-owned land and it has a whole, it's about eight, six, eight pages. It has the entire process and a list like this of who to send this out to for their recommendation. Planning Board is on that list, one of the entities, conservation commissioners and many others in the city as well. So uh once in a while you will get this before you on a recommendation, positive or negative on the sale of this land. Um in terms of the Department of Planning and Development, um there's no issues I see, no use of that land I can see the city using it for. In the thirty days, this is the last day of the thirty days, tomorrow I'll have to send it all to the mayor. We received only one comment, um nobody else has any issues with it. The Recreation Department had some interest in making a pocket park in that area. And that was the only use they saw for it, um but everybody else had no use or no comments for issues with the sale of these parcels.
So procedurally, it comes to us as a recommendation.
Yeah.
Understand.
How are we evaluating the wisdom of this transaction? Is it, like you said, to just make sure that the city isn't missing out on some public use in it?
Exactly, so every, every like board or commissioner or department may have a specific look at the land. For example, DPW, do we need this land for any purpose right away or utilities or any purpose like that? There is, there was no Department of Planning Development, you know, we looked at master plans, we looked at. Uh other plans to say, you know, open space plan, is this, are these parcels? Is there any recommendation to use these parcels in these plans? Uh there there isn't. But things like that, so you go through the master plan and other ways or just even thinking as board member, what would we potentially use this? This this land for.
I remember one time there was uh some lands, northern part of town, and it was contiguous to some conservation land, I think. And we recommended against the sale of that.
I see for that reason. Yes, exactly, I remember.
Okay, and there was a basis in other plans and priorities the city had expressed. Okay, got it. So we don't know or we don't need to know or we can't know what the plans are?
Districtal residential, is it commercial, is it mixed use?
Yeah, along Deerfield Street is all general commercial.
General commercial.
But I would suggest, so there aren't that many building sites for houses in Greenfield in this neighborhood or any neighborhood. It's, I think it's kind of a tricky site. And there's a lot of weird grades going on, but there's houses next to it, so it must be possible. Probably warehouses on these sites at one point that burned, right? So it'd be great, ideally, the city would sell it to someone who intends to build housing on it or build something on it.
Build something on it, yeah. But that's, you just lost some down there. But the process does not include the person indicating what they want to use it for.
No.
No, but I do know what the person wants to use it for. They just want to keep it as open space. They don't plan and develop.
It's typically that intention if stated, used as a rationale for.
Sometimes uh if, you know, depending on the amount of information known, so it might say in this part here, here's the intended use of the property. And that's not in this one.
Right.
For example, there was one that um former Polish Club lands and that up there, there was somebody that wanted to do commercial. Some type of commercial sta- campground establishment there, and that's why they were gonna buy it. There was a recommendation, I think most of the departments said, yes, sell it, but never ended happening.
It's also irrelevant that the person was a former town council.
Yeah, no, that's irrelevant. I just mentioned it. But yeah, I know so far that I've been here, uh like I said, eighteen years in Greenfield and. Was one study done on when MJ Adams, the Lark Group from UMass, Lance. Lark, let me see, landscape, architecture, regional planning, I think, Lark. And they did a study of potential housing at that location. Yep, and um. It was a unique little study to say that housing could be put there, to say your concerns there, yeah.
If we're trying to make the most of city property, selling it to someone who states they're not gonna do anything with it. And we have the asset values, those asset values aren't gonna go up if it remains, well, it is zero now, I guess, if it's public land, but. If it's developed, then it becomes more valuable, more taxable. Probably, I think it just from a market standpoint, it probably would be housing because that's just. I I my opinion is that's more viable use, but Victor, it could be something else too, something vertical would be better than nothing vertical.
Yeah, I agree.
From a tax standpoint, so. The city, i- it, I mean, we can't know, I guess you probably can't make sale conditional and.
But you could say it's blame will recommend that, for example, you could say um we are giving a negative recommendation. Cause we feel this parcel could be used for housing. Something like that to address the housing issue or something, whatever you want to say.
Is developed to address the taxable. If if the buyer, it was supposed to know who the buyer is and they're a real estate developer or builder, you know. Have some confidence that that's what's gonna be used for, but if it's not someone like that, who doesn't have the wherewithal necessarily to develop three lots. Not wherewithal, but they're not, it's not their business. Seems unlikely that would ever happen in in their lifetime. So we lose the opportunity for three, for a million dollars worth of development. That could be taxed and occupied.
Essentially moving toward a motion.
So, yeah, so I I don't think we should do it, you know, until or unless they give us more indication that they intend to make. And what what are they gonna do with it? So I guess is that, is it a yes or no? Is it a no unless? What's the nature of our?
We're just making positive or negative recommendations.
Binary.
Yeah.
Okay, and make a motion to make a neg- negative.
Recommend. Need a recommendation with the fact that the potential loss of revenue is a fact.
And, you know, they should at least try to sell it to somebody who's gonna make use of it. And if if it sits there forever, that's maybe then at some point we decide. I know there's people out there that build on little parcels like this, but all of the time.
But uh just a quick thing.
Second, that opinion in a second.
Quick thing that you mentioned, Victor, um. It'll come back.
About what he was saying about developing it or?
Yeah, yeah, oh, okay, there's my thought. Right now, it's, we own it, there's no taxes being paid on it. If this guy buys it, then there's taxes being paid on it, that's all helping. The minimal, but that's the beta.
I agree, but we'd like to see something. That end benefits give me and in multiple, either from a, from a housing point of view or from a commercial retail point of view. We we don't need an empty lot sitting there, cause no one's gonna use it. It's not gonna become a park, it's not gonna become anything that the public's using, so really as a, not a, we'd rather wait till something better come along.
And, all right, we have economic development staff.
And they they were instrumental in this project we were just talking about, so they did buy to promote or market, you know. Uh this were some. Do we have a motion for a negative recommendation as a second?
We seconded, Mr.
And is there any further uh deliberation? Hearing none, all in favor of negative. And appreciate that you asked about the context or what we're doing, that's always helpful. First the first time around.
Well, I just figured it wasn't something that we've done since I've been here, it's good to get some background.
Next, uh action item is, again, revising a recommendation of a proposed zoning amendment to allow medical centers for clinics. By right in the central commercial zoning district, we did not have the requisite uh prevotes uh last time. We haven't discussed this something. Open to someone making a motion if they're so inclined.
I'll make a motion, we approved the zoning.
It's a positive or negative recommendation.
I think we send a positive recommendation to accept a zone, propose zone.
To allow medical centers, clinics by right.
Now, this is the one you're against.
Oh, no, that's right now.
No, no, we're actually looking at.
Okay, that one thing I like, yeah.
Yes.
So we talked about the 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 rationale for this being about there are some.
Fix errors in the past, right, disagree with it.
I think one of the question, I I feel like we didn't have enough information at the time, so we wanted to maybe, I'm not sure, I think you weren't there, Eric. So we wanted to wait till you were here to give us a little more context. My question was. You came to an idea like this on on another discussion. Is it really just a all or nothing recommendation or is there? You know, it's it's by right up to a certain scale. And once you, if you're talking about a small medical office or something, that's one thing, but if you're talking about a major facility, maybe that's a different thing. Is there some grading or nuance to this?
Well, the 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 language as is is very basic and clear, and that's what you got to provide is either positive or negative recommendation. Uh right now, it's just the proposal is to allow this use category, medical clinics slash. Offices by right in the central commercial district instead of by special permit. There are no other details about how that is done, just simply removing special permit requirement, making it by right.
But again, as I recall, the reason for doing this, because there are clinics that are not there, that shouldn't be there. And now we're just trying to say, okay, they'd be there.
Or they didn't go through.
Proper process.
Proper process.
We would make them go through the proper process, and there was a concern raised that they're gonna shutter their doors and move out of town. And I don't think that's true, if it does. Here, cause you know, we shouldn't be making, we shouldn't be passing ordinances to approve things that were done improperly. Cause that's essentially what we're doing, we're passing over, we're making amendment change to allow things that were done improperly be okay.
So they, so I understand. They are allowable in this district. If by special permits, okay.
And I know part of my uh was both two things, one, it shouldn't go back and correct things. If it wasn't on the right time, that's from the needs to be addressed, some other mechanism, not by changing what is a reasonable uh standard. And also the whole thing about squeezing out retail, um I don't think it should be all or nothing. That, you know, everyone gets everything, either, you know, at a more distant store or, you know, via the internet. I think there should be some, you know, a balance of uh retail downtown and we don't wanna um. Uh make it easier for these things to squeeze squeeze that out, so that's fine. So I will make uh a motion to forward a negative recommendation, so this.
Uh second, okay.
Further deliberation?
So the. Logic is, we're, we're, we're taking this as. Yep, so it's. It was inspired by, if, if we made this change, Eric, would. Exist, let's say we, it doesn't pass here or the council. And does that mean that existing owners and clinics have to go get a retroactive special permit? If they can't get it, they have to close? Or, or is it only, we're just talking about the future?
What it means is that Mark Snow, Inspector Building, has a huge task ahead of himself. If this is not approved. They'll be um, compelled to do enforcement action against all those illegal. Medical clinics, centers in CC district. That'll be quite an undertaking for him, and some of these people might. I don't know what will happen. There'll be some negative reactions from it, of course, because they've been there for a while and now all of a sudden. Enforcement actions being taken against them, but that's what will happen.
Yeah, I guess I still don't understand quite the, the scope of what that would, like, are we talking? A couple of buildings, does this happen downtown or?
Well, we're talking uh, just for one building, one arch place, three businesses. Two or three businesses in that one building. So overall, I don't know the exact number, but it's probably. Twenty to thirty, I mean, ten to twenty, in that range.
Also the C H T and uh, Community Health Center on Main Street, one oh two Main Street.
Well, they went through, they went through the proper process.
They went through the proper process, right?
On a Main Street, the recent one, I meant one oh two Main Street, yes.
Okay, thank you, I wasn't.
I figured they would have, because that, that was significant investment in the.
Oh, yeah. No, they went through the proper process. It's just some of these other ones that have been in place for many years that didn't know it maybe and. And town never realized it, city now, and um, so somebody brought to light.
It came to our attention.
Yes, so now we have to respond.
Well, since you're talking about arts place, I'll make another disclosure that I'm a C S O employee, and that's a C S O building. But I'm obviously voting or we're making a motion, it is not in C S O's best interest in that regards.
In my opinion, this, the way I'm interpreting this. This is a political fix, not a policy fix. I mean. We, we're not, this is not our decision to make where if we say yes, the zoning passes or doesn't pass, it's up to the, the council to figure that out.
Yes, we just recommend.
Yeah.
It is recommended.
So if we're thinking about it more in a pure sense of moving forward, let's forget about the political baggage. We think it's, it's worth keeping a special permit in, like, that, that's how I'm thinking about it.
Yeah.
City councils are the politicians.
They're the ones that gotta deal with the problem we create.
That's their, that's what they.
We say, no, you shouldn't do this, they'll, they'll appear out of fix.
We're bored, they're elected body, that's.
That's how it works.
I like the premise of the special permit for this use in that area, because they have to prove as the applicant that it doesn't. Cause.
adverse effects on their neighborhood.
To the neighborhood, so.
I agree.
It's good allowed, they just have a special.
Correct. Listen, I went through a special permit process to open a daycare, like, it's not, and. I don't think it's gonna be. Employed at the time and we had a new one, it's possible.
That's gonna be a financial burden that might be very much.
Yeah, it's, you gotta send out some mailing, that's the worst part, and sit at a public theater. It's not possible.
They'll give a motion in a second.
Yep. Uh, so all in favor of forwarding this negative recommendation? I.
Alright.
Is yours? And what else? Uh.
So was this, was the church last week? Can I just kind of pick up with my paperwork?
No, the church is, when this happening, already happened at six today.
Okay.
Okay, so um, Board and Staff reports, I will mention that um. Uh, the uh, S G I C, Past Plan and Planation Committee has finished. Uh, going to, and making tweaks to the, recommended tweaks to the uh, Past Plan uh, Chapter Updates. To then ready to submit it to the planning board, so I will forward that to folks and we'll find a time to. Put that over and consider, excuse me, next steps. As far as uh, next meet, okay, so we, um, Peter did say, I don't know if you heard, he can make sixteen. And you still can't.
I cannot.
Yeah, um, sorry about that. Um, wait, that was Sarah can't. We will have a quorum, and so that will be to consider. Um, and you'll get this sent out, Eric, I don't think, no, this did go to everybody. The um, new information you got from your training, from your webinar about, I think that date.
Oh, the A D U C S.
Yeah, A D U S, and the um. The adjustment to um. Uh, the um, site plan review process, also we bumped to that. Because one of the provisions in there was explicitly to do a site plan review for a test. Um, for uh, A U, and so that would be something that would have to be struck, so we wanted to put those together. Um, there was also um. Uh, Council Garrett had reached out. Um, and so at the, we had forwarded a positive recommendation. About the proposal to um, allow uh, first floor residential units if they weren't facing the busy street to mixed use. And the E D C um. Uh, it was not, they expressed some concerns about that in relation to, and they wanted. Some of that to be reconsidered by us as far as further adjustments, so that'll be on the agenda as well.
It's a six general discussion topic.
Um, that's a good question.
Yeah, it'll be a general discussion topic, just. Well, i- in Council Garrett's email, he's mentioned that three things, and he said maybe the third one would be substantially, but uh, every single thing he mentions would be a substantial change, we required the process start over.
Okay, so we'll, right, discuss it and, and see if we, because we've already forwarded a recommendation, see if we want to. If it was small enough change, we might adjust that and recommend again, we could potentially do that.
Depending on what the nature of the changes.
Got it, okay.
I'd like to bring up something, the topic. Eric and I were talking earlier about drawing, which is that. Is there any, I, I, I came here, I don't, I do not want to slow anything down at all, but I also don't like seeing full-fledged drawings. And then really just being a rubber stamp. And unfortunately, the only way we can do anything about it according to what there is, the, it's the by right thing that does this. So in fact, we have everything by right, means they don't even need to come before the planning board for a proposal to say, look, I'd like to build a church here, I wanna build a school. But then it has to happen, it's by right. Are we? That we thinking that? Do we wanna make it where everyone has to come? Forward and say, I'd like to buy this property, and on this property, I would like to build this, before we let them buy the property and build that?
Well, I think, I think in response to this, this goes back to what is the zoning ordinance say? And so one of, for example, um, one of the uh, things that came out of the E T C deliberation was uh. Having it say that commercial is required on the side with the most traffic, or have special rules, rules for Main Street, in particular, to keep that a commercial car. So those are potential, so it comes down to how you set up the zoning, and we can initiate zoning changes.
I know, but I'm not, going back to the thing that came to me before, say the, the twenty more units. I mean. If we had had input from the beginning, maybe we could have figured out why the commercial didn't work. Help them through that, get that commercial to work. Because all it was is financial, they said it very clearly, financial, 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 and we lost that commercial space. But there's nothing we can do about it now, because you're not gonna go back and redesign it, can't do it, so I'm just saying, is. I thought by right was a good idea when we started talking about something, could have paved the way. Now I just see us as being almost a useless board, in so much as we're not really directing anything in here. We're not steering the town, we're helping create and develop things because it's already done. We're just sitting here looking at it saying, huh, okay.
I mean, we're making some conditions based on what we can, if we want to have broader input, I don't think it's that we get involved in the design earlier, it's that we craft. The zoning ordinance so that as they're making these plans, they say, oh, we have to go by this standard.
Okay, but I think you wanna make a zoning law, it says you can only have commercial signage on Main Street. We don't wanna say that, because we like the residential part, so how do we say?
No, but on the first floor, yeah.
You can say that, and zoning.
Well, you can say it has to be, and that maybe we need to do that, which it has to be.
That's what the E D C was.
So we need to, we need to, well, we need to do that, we need to do something, and that's not so much just that, it's even the first project we all worked together over there on uh. Front of the road, wonder by the, the, you know, Taraz's sign over there, you know, if we had gotten involved. Not by involve, I guess involved is, if we'd seen it early on, before they actually put it to pencil to paper, we could have said. We'd like you to put eight units here, we'd like you, and if they said, we can't, why? Why can't you? How can we help you? Because I wanna help them get this stuff done, I don't wanna stop. I definitely wanna help them, and if we, if at some point we just can't do anything, say, okay, we can't do it, you can do what you wanna do, but if you had the opportunity to try. Uh, I don't know if we wanna, how we do that. If, if there's a way to do that, and if it makes any sense to you. I don't want, I wanna make more work for anybody and anybody, and I'm willing to help anytime I can, but I really think, I'd like to be, I, where I came from, the planning board, you went to the planning board before you did anything. Had to walk in, lay it down, say, I'm buying this property, is what I wanna put on it, then the plan board said, yes or no?
Chairman?
Yes, please.
Yeah, my experience in the realm of planning is that um. The more defined a zoning ordinance is, more clear guidelines and criteria standards a zoning ordinance has. The better for developers to come into your community and do something in your community. It, it's the situations where it's vague, not clear, or if you have to go in front of a board to even get permission to even think about a project before they even do it. That's not good, developers want shorty. They, in the zoning orders, so they can look at their zoning orders from across the world and make a decision on whether they're coming to your city or not, based on your regulations.
That, that, that sounds reasonable too, I, I would just try to think how they can do, I mean, we put things like, we want the maximum amount of dwellings our property can handle, you really wanna say that? That really, everyone wanna handle it?
There's a limit to what we can legally dictate about private property.
Yeah.
Um, but we can't require that people build the maximum allowable density, for example, but. Like Eric saying, the more we can be explicit about the things we, so like. So I, I think what we'll talk about next time is, is, we'll start by talking about the distinction between. By right, site plan review and special permit, to understand where the, the lines are. And then I think a lot of it will come down to the criteria we have in our toolkit to evaluate things. Right now, a lot of the things that I personally would like to be able to control, we don't have the power to control, we can just talk about. Functional things. There aren't a lot of urban design controls in there, for example, but if there were guidelines that said all buildings need to have this orientation to streets. Then they would just do that, and we would see a plan that we like coming in the door. You also can't require that they come to you sooner, but. If they see some rules in the zoning, they might like to get our opinion, because they need help interpreting, and we can recommend.
And all of us having a workshop, and we have workshops, we allow that.
I'm sure that Eric, I mean, everyone in the city would like to talk to people sooner than later, because you don't wanna send them back to the drawing board, so. That could be something we, maybe there is a mechanism for that, but that's the sort of thing I think you're talking about, because I'm in the same boat as you, I don't like to see something that's already been engineered. And then the second you point out, well, why can't you have a sidewalk there, everyone's just like, why are you gonna blow up my project?
It's funny, because it's the opposite.
It used to be a sidewalk.
For, for planning staff.
Yeah.
We wanna see the plan come in with, what we would like to see is somebody coming with zero conditions, zero changes to the plan, they did it a hundred percent perfectly. Based on our regulations, they came in, looked at everything, no changes, the plan is done, that's what we wanna see.
And, and also, you, you're, you know, shifting of the building, wasn't unanimously supported on, by the board.
That's true.
So.
Yeah, and I didn't die on that cross, that hill.
We have a meeting where one of our, one of our main agenda items is a discussion of this nature.
I think that's what.
I'll be here the next, but I'm not here though. We could, well, whatever.
It depends on the first meeting in February, if there's nothing else coming in, maybe that would be.
I would love to, really, you know, hash it out amongst us, so we all understand what we're each thinking, and then figure out what mechanisms are available to us in order to do that.
Yeah, the other thing too is C P D, uh, Citizen Planner Training Collaborative Training, um, is being announced now, I can send you guys a notice about it.
Sure.
They have roles and responsibilities of the planning board, roles and responsibilities, zoning boards, very helpful courses that would, that you would like.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I think we're seeing, I mean, the uh, the, the uh, zoning board, you don't wanna change it willy-nilly. Or recommend changing willy-nilly, but you do want it to evolve, and we're doing, we've been doing, it's quite a few, it's gotten confusing with. But uh, you know, that's, that's to try to, because it evolves over time and what the needs, uh, perceived needs are, so, so. And we are one of the five, you know, entities that can propose zoning change, so.
But I think to, to sort of build on Victor's point. I know we've talked about site plan review, and we keep kicking the word around as to like, what would require a special permit? What's by right? What would require site plan review? And site plan review sort of feels like as a, as a newer person here, the. You know, they sort of come in, they tell you about their plan, and they ask you to say yes or no. And being able to add a little bit more teeth. To the planning board in that regard, I think really kinda better defines our purpose in, for that scope, that's.
Great. And, and um, those trainings are great to take this training.
Yeah.
Review, so. Um, this really does help you understand what are the, what's the range of authority we have reasonably.
So are we shifting, when is Sarah back? We, maybe she hasn't committed yet to.
What, twelve weeks, right?
Well, maybe February.
It'd be nice to have the full board present in the discussion, because everybody's interested.
And if we do get a bunch of uh, you know, action items for the February meeting, maybe if the board's willing to hold a. Second meeting again, even though we gotta wait for two meetings, get that, get that whole meeting, a second meeting for this such a discussion.
I think it'd be a great thing to do. If there's a time that everybody's available, I think that would be a very good use of our.
I'm not available the third Thursday, I've got, I've got a Mason's meeting and I.
That's right, I remember that.
Oh, yeah, so third Thursdays are off. We'll think about a different date and.
I did want to announce too, that um, uh, as far as the alternate positions, I just heard from Thomas Bledsoe, who had expressed his interest, he's been before. Planboard and commented at times, and uh, he had put his name in, in October, I think, and he just heard from the mayor's office that his name has been put forward, so it should be on the fifteenth.
The gentleman who was at the last meeting.
I think he was, yes, and, yeah, yep, and uh, so he's being put forward, so. Uh, on the fifteenth, assuming he gets supported by the council, and also um, Charles Rocks has put in.
Oh, wow.
His interest in coming back, who was the former, a long time board member and a long time chair. So I don't know, I'm gonna contact the mayor's office to see if his name is put forward as well, or.
That would fill out the roster.
It would.
Nice.
But, yeah.
Motion for adjournment?
Are you making one?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
All in favor, aye.
Thank you, as always.